Anyway, we'll take, we'll save the formal opening of the, the roll call and all that based upon the agenda. So I guess we're going to go over the work session here on House Bill 2001. And Kelly, I'll just turn it over to you and then you can do with it what you like.
Okay, thank you, Chair Carlton. So tonight, we're going to be hearing from DLCD staff who was kind enough to join us tonight on their evening off, or I believe their evening off. So we're going to hear from Nathan Stuckmeyer. I believe that's how you pronounce his name. I apologize if it's not. He is the Senior Planner of Housing Programs with DLCD. And then also with us is Jennifer Donley, our DLCD rep for the city of Sandy. And then after their presentation, we're going to turn it over to Emily, our Senior Planner, and she's going to present the actual code changes that we're proposing. And then after that, we're going to open it up to Q and A. And from there, we'll go to our regular session as, as Mr. Carlton already announced. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Ethan.
Thanks, Kelly. I don't know, Jennifer, did you want to say anything before we get started? Otherwise, I can jump right in.
Thanks, Ethan. You can jump right in. Kelly introduced me. I'm the Regional Rep for the City of Sandy, also Clackamas County and Multnomah County and Gillum County and Wheeler County.
Thanks, Jennifer. I don't know if it's possible. I have just a couple slides, visual aids. If I can have sharing abilities, I'll, I'll throw those up. And I promise I'll be really brief. I know that you've got some things to discuss, but I really just wanted to give an overview of House Bill 2001 as it relates to Sandy. So everyone, I'm Ethan Stuckmeyer. I'm the Senior Housing Planner at DLCD, working on implementation and the rules associated with House Bill 2001, which was passed last year, of course. So I'm going to attempt a screen share here. Everybody can see the slideshow, right?
Yep.
Okay, great. So I'm going to start. There we go. Okay, just a couple slides here. Visual aid, it'll give you something to look at as I'm going through here. But so House Bill 2001 is really focused on what we, what we call middle housing, right? And so this is a range of middle housing types from a duplex all the way up to a cottage cluster and a townhome. But really, what the city of Sandy is required to allow is only the duplex portion of that rule. So you'll kind of hear me talk about medium-sized cities and large and metro cities throughout the just a couple slides here. But Sandy falls into the category of medium-sized city. So, you know, in these triangles here, there's a total of 55 cities that are subject to House Bill 2001 across the state. So different requirements for medium-sized cities and for larger metro cities. For medium-sized cities, those are cities outside of the Portland metro boundary with a population between 10,000 and 25,000 population. The requirements for these medium cities is that they allow for a duplex development on all lots and parcels that are zoned residential and allow for the development of this detached single-family dwelling. So very cut and dry, must allow for a duplex on all lots and parcels, very specific language there in the, in the bill. And so cities are able to regulate the development of duplexes, regulate the sitting and design of duplexes only if the regulations do not cause quote unquote unreasonable cost and delay, either individually or cumulatively. And so we'll talk about what that might mean in just a second. But really, the underlying intent behind House Bill 2001 is to allow the additional housing types and housing choices for households across the state of Oregon. But also, it entitles cities to withhold that ability to regulate these middle housing types so that they fit within the existing context and the, and have a relationship to the other developments in, in the city or, or single-family detached homes specifically. So again, just kind of a callback here, the flexibility that a local jurisdiction has is related to regulating the sighting and design of middle housing types. And so you can think of the sighting and design as building height setbacks, parking, facade details like windows and front entries, driveways, and kind of the list goes on. So House Bill 2001 requires our department, DLCD, Department of Land Conservation Development, to draft what they call a model code. And the model code serves two purposes. If number one is a document that provides guidance to cities as they're going through the local adoption process to comply with House Bill 2001, but it also has an enforcement mechanism, a regulatory mechanism, where if a city does not act, which means if they have not adopted locally compliant development codes to comply with House Bill 2001 by the established deadline, which is June 30th of 2021 for medium cities. If they have not, if they're not found to be compliant by that time, the model code would apply directly. Until such time, the city has a, has adopted a compliant code. So it's got both the kind of carrot and the stick sides to the sides of the coin there in providing guidance, but also is enforcing mechanism as well. And so on top of the model code, so that's one very specific set of standards. It's a best practices, it's a, there's not a whole lot of flexibility there because it has to be applied directly. And so the city has to be able to take the model code and, you know, not have to do any further adaptation, amendment to the model code so that it can be applied directly. So it's very rigid in that sense. And the city, a city has ability to use other standards other than what's in the model code. But the department needed to establish what that kind of spectrum, that range of standards could be so that as we, the Department of Land Conservation, the Development are reviewing City of Sandy's development code, we can ensure that they're still compliant with the intent of House Bill 2001. So that's the difference between these model codes that you see on the top of the screen and then these minimum compliance standards, which really, I like to call them kind of the floor and the ceiling of where a building height standard might be. So in the model code, building height standard might be 20 feet, very specific standard, one, one number. But then the minimum compliance standards, that's where the flexibility lives. So the city might be able to say the maximum building height for a duplex is the same as a single-family detached home, or they could say it's 30 feet or something like that, as long as it's not more restrictive than what they allow for single-family detached homes. Up here, these are kind of the six, as we were going through the rulemaking process with our rulemaking advisory committee and our commission. Here are the kind of six major things that we talked about and really decided on as a group, and then were adopted by the commission. So number one, establishing what does unreasonable cost and delay mean? And really, when we're talking about unreasonable cost and delay, we're talking about the standards that apply to a duplex above and beyond, or in relation to that same standard and how it applies to a single-family detached home. So that's really the unreasonableness that we're measuring, if there's a gap there and what that may look like. Also, the definition of a duplex, you might traditionally think of a duplex as just two attached units. We've, you know, had lots of discussion about whether that should be in a detached configuration and how that might look and whether that's different than a single-family detached home in an accessory dwelling net. So we give some, we give the cities options there to choose the attached or detached configuration. Number of units allowed on a lot of parcels. There was initial conversation about with the entitlements for, or the ability for a property owner to allow both a single-family detached home and an ADU on that same lot. And then how does that interplay with a duplex? So could a property owner have a duplex and an ADU at, and at the end of the day, have three units allowed on the parcel? And really, the commission has decided, no, the entitlement for an ADU is only attached to, to a single-family detached home. So kind of a maximum of two there. And then development standards, kind of these four and six, the development standards and the design standards are really pegged because duplexes are allowed on every lot and parcel or a single-family detached home is allowed. They're really kind of morphing into one in the same in terms of regulating them through development or citing and design standards. The citing and the design standards or development standards and design standards for a duplex really defer a lot to the existing standards that apply to a single-family detached home. So building height is a perfect example. Again, you know, the, the building height for a duplex, a city could say, look, we just don't want to have these huge towering duplexes. The maximum building height for a duplex is going to be the exact same maximum building height as a single-family detached home. So the city has that flexibility, that, that ability to do that. And of course, anytime you talk about development standards, parking is always the big conversation. And that was no different in this rulemaking process. The off-street parking requirements and maximums for a duplex are matching what, on a total development basis, they're matching what's required for a single-family detached home. So no medium city in the state requires more than two off-street parking spaces for a single-family detached home. And we've carried that forward to a duplex. So a maximum of two off-street parking spaces required for a duplex or one per unit, you can think of it as. But that's a, that's already a lot of information, and I didn't want to take a whole lot of time. I wanted to stay really high level. And if you have specific questions on any of these six or any other aspect of House Bill 2001, I'm happy to answer any question. So I'm going to kind of hang out and I'll just be here to answer those as they arise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. Did you, did you want to go into Emily's presentation? And then after that, do kind of a Q and A? And if Ethan's going to still be here, then we could ask questions of him or of our staff at the same time. Does that sound good to the commission?
Yeah, I think so. You know, I could just a couple of quick things. You know, we have an hour and we have the, with the benefit of having Ethan, in which I think it's probably a pretty scarce resource. So I would suggest we, we try and save it to high level as opposed to worrying about i's, t's, threes and fours. So we maximize our understanding of the law since we have him available to answer our questions.
Yeah, certainly. So Emily, do you want to start your presentation? And then afterwards, we'll just open it to Q and A and try to stay more at the higher level and some of the questions that you prepared for the commission as well.
Yeah. So there my screen now. Can you guys see that?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. So we've basically taken, you know, what our understanding of House Bill 2001 and tried to translate it into our code and the changes that we would be required to make. And I'll go through those briefly. The chapters we have identified are 1730, which is where we calculate density, 1734, which is single-family residential, 1760, which is FSH, 1774, which is where ADU standards are, and 1798, which is parking. The, there could be more. I mean, this is like a work session. So these are the ones that we have identified. So again, the, the main goal is just bring our code in compliance with House Bill 2001. As Ethan already mentioned, for medium-sized cities such as Sandy, this means we need to allow duplexes, attached duplexes, anywhere that a detached single-family residence is allowed. And we can't apply more restrictive development standards to the duplexes than what's applied to the single-family residence. And so this includes design standards, parking requirements and density thresholds. The bill also prevents cities from applying minimum parking standards and owner-see requirements to ADUs. So just briefly, currently, DLCD is reviewing the proposed code changes that we sent out to you guys for this work session. Once we have this work session and kind of get some feedback and get some feedback from DLCD, we'll officially notice them once we're ready to have a hearing. And right, we're thinking the hearing for Planning Commission would be in January, and then the hearing at council would be in March. So just to briefly go through the actual code changes we've proposed that would be required by House Bill 2001. So in the zoning district section, we just had to add a clause stating that duplexes will be, would be counted the same as a single-family residence for the purposes of calculating density. In 1734, Single Family Residential Chapter, we added duplex as a primary use permitted outright and removed it as a minor conditional use. And then we also amended the references to single detached dwellings that occur under the minimum lot area and minimum average lot width to include single detached dwelling or duplex. For 1760, our flood and hazard overlay, essentially, we just added or duplex after all of the references to single-family dwellings. Because that chapter allows like a single-family dwelling to be replaced. So we have to say a single-family dwelling or duplex to treat them equally. 1774, which is where our ADU section is, we updated the off-street parking standard for ADUs to be no minimum as required by the bill. We also deleted all of the texts related to ADU occupant limitations before the owner had to occupy either the primary residence or the ADU. So we've eliminated that as HB, as House Bill 2001 would require. And then we also are proposing increasing the maximum square footage of an ADU from 600 to 800 square feet. In Chapter 17, Parking, we updated the code to reduce the minimum number of required parking spaces for duplexes to one per dwelling unit or two total to match the two parkings' minimum total for single-family residential. And then one thing we have not done yet, but we caught after, after we uploaded the draft code proposal, is that we think we'll probably also have to update 1798-200. Somebody talking? I can't tell. Is there a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ray logged on, but he didn't notice. He has his mic on. I just muted him.
Okay. We think we'll need to update 1798-200 to only require one on, on-street parking space perplex as that would match the requirement for a single-family residence. So currently, we'd require two. We think that we're probably going to have to update that to just be one. So this is more kind of the, the meat of the discussion for tonight. I think these are the things we've identified where we think we have some, some kind of say, or we can make some, some policy calls. So Ethan got into this a little bit. So it's a House Bill 2001 requires city allow attached duplexes wherever detached single-family dwellings are allowed. But it's up to each city whether to also allow attached duplexes. So our current code, spoken in the SFR zone, because right now our SFR zone doesn't allow duplexes outright. But by default, our code would allow both attached and detached. So that's one thing that we could discuss is whether in the SFR, we want to also allow both detached and attached. Um, in addition, so this, this bill is really about the missing middle housing and providing, you know, there's those options. Even though we are a mid, medium-sized city, we can also allow some of the additional middle out. So that would include triplexes, forces, cottage clusters, et cetera. So this is another option. We are not required to allow these housing types where a single-family residential housing is allowed. But we are allowed to if we so desire. So House Bill 2001 doesn't allow a city to require more off-street parking for a duplex than first parking spaces we can require for duplexes to total, not to net, which is how our current code reads. One thing that we can control, though, is we can require that the spaces are side by side and not tandem, which would probably sense if we wanted to have it as one, one parking space per a unit of the duplex. We do tandem, then it could be associated with just one of the units because the other car would block the other car. So we cannot reply, we can, single-family residents, we don't actually have to, to apply design standards to duplexes. That is a decision we can make. Our existing code applies the same design standards to single-family residents and duplexes, which is in compliance with House Bill 2001. We don't recommend removing design standards for duplexes, but in theory, that is a decision that you can make. House Bill 2001 doesn't require, as Ethan mentioned, but we could allow, we could choose to allow both if we want. And then the other thing that we've sort of are proposing is increasing the maximum square footage of an ADU from 600 to 800 square feet. This is not required by House Bill 2001, but it may indirectly support it by just allowing more square footage and potentially encouraging more people to build ADUs. So that is one proposal we've thrown in there that is not directly required by House Bill 2001, but is supported by staff. So that's just kind of a quick overview of the discussion topics. If, if our friends from DLCD have any other areas that they know of where we can make decisions, that would be helpful. Or if they want to correct us on anything where, where we think we can make a decision, but we actually can't, that would also be helpful.
And so I think with that, we'll probably just turn it over to the commission to ask questions and kind of guide the rest of the work session from here. We don't really have a set way of going through all these. We, you know, in the second page of the staff report, Emily did list the five main bullet points or talking points on what we kind of wanted feedback from you tonight on, mainly so that we know how to write the code in preparation for the January meeting or the public hearing, I should say. One of the ones that Emily did touch upon at the end there was increasing the size of an ADU from 600 to 800. One of the reasons why we're proposing that is because over the years, since I've worked here, at least, we've had a lot of requests to adjust the size of the ADU above 600 square feet. And we usually just approve those. So instead of making people go through kind of that extra bureaucratic red tape, and a lot of them want to go in like the 700 to 720 square foot range. But instead of making them go through that extra process, we thought it would just be more expedient to just make the code a little bit larger. 600 square feet is pretty limiting in how big like a accessory dwelling unit could be. So that's kind of our idea around that. One thing, one thing you will notice is I think the distinction between, with the passing of House Bill 2001, the distinction between a duplex and an ADU on a single-family home, there's not a lot of difference. So the duplex and an eight, and a single-family home with an ADU, they start to become one in the same thing, since every zone's going to have to allow them now. The one difference in our code being that the ADU right now is limited to 600 square feet. So that, that is the big difference. And then even, even if we did go to something like 800 square feet, hypothetically speaking, the duplex, the second unit, which would be a duplex unit, could be larger than that. So that's the main difference between the two. However, neither one, either the So with that, I'll turn it over to the planning commission.
Kelly, is it safe to say that if I add a duplex, I could not have an ADU in addition to it?
No, how the code's, how the code is currently written for the city of Sandy is, you could say in our R2 zone, you, or our ones when you could have a duplex and an ADU. So you could essentially have three dwelling units. The single-family residential zone, which is not compliant with House Bill 2001 currently, you could propose a duplex through a minor conditional use permit and at the same time propose an ADU. So in theory, even with our current code, staff could approve the, the minor conditional use permit and the ADU and have three. And we actually have somebody that's proposing that currently. He just hasn't brought in the actual land use application yet, but that's exactly what he's looking to do.
If you want to speak, you can just put your hand up or just let it go. So anybody who wants to ask a question, go for it.
Chair, I got a question. I think this was for Ethan. This backs up on what was asked during the presentation. Was there, of any of these five things that are listed in our staff report for us to consider, is there anything there that we should not be considering because it's unethical for us to do that? Or are these all good assumptions as she, as she asked?
Yeah, no, Emily nailed it and staff nailed it. Those are, I think there's only one other one, and that's a lot coverage standard where the city is not required to apply a lot coverage standard. But if they do, it can't be more restrictive than what they already apply to single-family detached home. But no, those are, those are all great. And I like the addition of the ADU in size increase. I think like Kelly was mentioning, the, the bright line between a duplex and an ADU is getting less bright by the day. And the, I mean, there are some advantages, I think, you know, especially parking to, to build an ADU. You're not held to the parking standard. But yeah, I think that, that's a good summary and, and those are the options, really.
Oh, and an ADU is, are you required or not required to, for them to provide parking?
So as a, in a change in House Bill 2001, the legislature deemed off-street parking spaces for an ADU as an unreasonable standard. So a city cannot require additional off-street parking spaces for an ADU above what's already required for a single-family detached home.
So are they required to have, okay, no off-street parking? So we would have to consider that in, for on-street parking, I guess.
No, no. So you, we won't. The on-street parking, which Emily covered in one of her slides, which we haven't added to the code changes yet. We're only going to be able to require one. So our on-street parking code section, 1798-200, it requires one parking space for each single-family home. It currently would require two for a duplex. That is going to be unconstitutional essentially. So we would, we'd be able to require one per lot essentially. So if they have a duplex, or if they have a single-family home, or if they have a duplex with an ADU, they're only going to have to build the infrastructure to have one off-street part, one on-street parking space for all of those units, irregardless of the type of units. And, and the same, the same thing for on, or off-street parking as well. The most we can require is whatever we require for a single, a single-family home. So our current standards too, I wouldn't suggest going above that. And so that's the most we'd be able to require for a duplex or a duplex with an ADU would be two. Now, they can build more than that if they so choose, but we can require more than that.
So, so the tandem parking really comes into play just in terms of congestion, I would, I would say. So that's a question Emily had for us to look at. Is, is that right?
Yes.
That's one of the spots where you can kind of make a call. I mean, I think I would recommend requiring it to be side by side rather than tandem, but it's a
I'm, I'm just thinking a little bit about, you know, when we get into Dick, I guess, our one, and I'm thinking of the lot sizes and some of the developments we've had. You know, we've had actually problems with even getting on-street parking for one sandy pickup, I would say, versus a small SUV, just because of the width of the lots, the curb cuts. I don't know, I'd see, I don't know if there's anything we can do about it. I just kind of see a train wreck coming kind of down the road when it comes to where those vehicles going to be. Because I kind of understand what they're trying to say. And I think in places like Portland, where, you know, people have a lot of transportation options. They have a lot of, I mean, some people just decide not to have a car. And so that all works. In Sandy, the chances of somebody, you know, not having a car is not very high. And so there's at least one, you know, and sometimes two. So I just, I don't know, I guess we need to think about a little bit. I just feel there's maybe a train wreck coming when it comes. When it comes to just the whole parking issue and residential.
I was just going to point out that this just requires us to not set the minimum parking at more than two. Total, so one each for each unit of the duplex to match the single family. That doesn't mean that a developer couldn't come in and propose more parking. So it could probably be market driven ultimately, but our code requirement can only be that of the single family.
So, so the duplexes in just envisioning generally a duplex would not have a garage?
Most of our duplexes that have been built since I've worked here do have garages. With the exception of the ones on Creekside Loop that Mr. Trimble built. And even though some of them do have garages and some don't, so it's about 50/50 down there, but. Most of the other ones I've seen in Sandy at least do have a garage, but that's not to say they would be required to.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. See, that's what we usually end up with. If you have a garage, then you have one parking space inside the garage, hopefully. And you have one in the driveway. So, you know, technically you do have two, which kind of mitigates a little bit. So assuming you only have one. Then, you know, you just get a little tricky with the on-street parking.
Can I ask a question, Chair? Kelly, this one's more just for my own indication. When you're speaking about detached or attached duplexes, does the builder have to get different permits for. Detached duplexes versus attached? Or is it, like I said, a one permit for an attached and a two permit for a detached? Is there an advantage to doing it either way?
No, you could do it all under one permit still. You would have fire separation requirements if you're doing them detached. So if you're doing them attached, then you have to have your two-wall firewall separation between the units. If you're detaching them, then you have to have them separated by at least six feet by Oregon State Building Code, or then you have to do more robust. Firewall standards. So, but no, we, we should be able to do them all under the same permit. I, I think there's only one. Detached duplex in Sandy that I'm aware of, or that was built in the last 20 years at least. There might be older ones. And then she condoized them. So she actually made them into separate, two separate condo units on one legal lot of record.
No, thank you. That answers it. My, my second question was, goes back to the parking. What was explained was you could do in tandem, or you could do side by side, but in Don's. What he, the one he was talking about is if you had two duplexes side by side attached with garages on each end of it. And you had a single car garage with a car in the driveway, that's, is that considered two spaces? And that, would that be tandem parking? Or is that considered four spaces? And you, you can't do that with a side by side then if that's what your requirement is. Am I, is my thinking correctly in that context?
So are you saying if we required units that have both the garage and a parking space in front of the garage?
Could you do side by side if you, if you have condos that are built with a garage and a single car outlet on either side of the duplex? But if you have a requirement for side by side parking, can, can that even be a consideration?
Yeah, that would have to be fleshed out quite a bit more. If, yeah, I get what you're saying.
You know what I mean?
I mean, if, if you wanted to consider something like two parking spaces for a duplex. So a space inside of garage and the space in front of the garage. You would then technically be requiring each single family home in Sandy to have four parking spaces. So you would not be able to build a single family home in Sandy with a single car garage.
You were reading my mind. That's where I was going with that. I just wanted to understand it better. Thank you.
I think it's, I think it's a risky move because I don't know how you could do a row house. Or most of our row houses in Sandy only have single car garages and those are technically. A single family home since they're on a lot of record. I don't think technically you could really do that with a straight face.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems to me like a duplex would only have a single garage, just from a space standpoint.
If the developer wanted to exceed it and have the garage plus the parking apron in front, they could do that. For each of the duplexes, but you couldn't force them to do that. Right. Again, it just comes back to whatever the single family resident. I was gonna ask a question with, with our out of town experts. Chris brought it up earlier. With Ethan and Jennifer, is there. Is there any best practices, things that you've seen that you can enlighten us on? I've kind of explained the laws and how they work. Are there potential pitfalls that other people run into that we can avoid?
Yeah, really good question. So. I'll answer it with both a yes and a no. So the yes part of that response is, that's what the model code is for. We took the word model seriously in drafting the model code. And that really is. What we kind of call the set of best practices in terms of applying standards for middle housing. Really with a kind of a lens of how can we create the most middle housing, right? So that's, that's one. And then no, because it's a new requirement for the state. So there's very few. Cities, especially medium sized cities that have been really kind of in this lane for some time. And I've seen, seen production of duplexes so that we can kind of bring these best practices out. So. Yes, and that the model code was built on all sorts of research from Oregon and other places as well, other places across the country. And no, that it's just kind of too new to really know how it plays out. But yeah, I think at the end of the day, I would, I would point you to the model code to, to pull those best practices out.
And I assume Emily has that and she's looked at it and she's in the process of integrating it?
I've looked at it. It's been a while. It doesn't really, like the structure of it doesn't really fit to just plop it into our code. So we tried to kind of just integrate the things where they would best fit into our code, like the density and stuff like that.
Yeah, and that's, that was the challenge with the whole thing, right? We're writing a development code for. Basically, you know, every decent sized city across the state, which is a really tall task when. The city of Sandy's code is different than La Grande, which is different than Newport's. And so.
Well, maybe ask my question a little bit a different way then. What about other states? Is anybody, are we, are we pioneers in this? Out here or are other people trailblazers a little bit before us? And what have they found out of anything?
Right. So, yes, very, very much trailblazers. As it were for the, for the state of Oregon. So. There's been a couple of cities that have gone the way of kind of the intent of House Bill 2001. Minneapolis was really kind of the first, I think New Orleans was close, but. The state of Oregon's really the first and only state at this point in time to have a similar requirement. Kind of. You know, adding different middle house or different housing types to the single family detached zones.
Thanks.
So I'd like to add something quickly. I would encourage the city to look at the city of Hood Rivers parking code. I know that the city of Hood River is quite a bit smaller than the city of Sandy, but they do increase in size with. Not so much nowadays, but with tourism. And there's a lot of very large cars, trucks. Trucks, you know, being the huge vans that come through. So the parking requirements here are. Two per unit and they can be in tandem. But I would encourage you to look at that because there's quite a few townhouses. And there's a lot of different structures of, of housing types here to look at as well.
Is Hood Rivers code, just out of curiosity, is that, is that a two-car maximum or a minimum?
I think it's a two-car. I think they start with minimums. I don't believe they have maximums.
Thank you.
I, I'm wondering if Ethan or Jennifer have, oh, sorry. I'm wondering if Ethan or Jennifer. I'm wondering if Ethan or Jennifer have anything to say about, it might be too early. But the changes in. Parking, in other words, people may be using less cars if they're working from home. And it seems like a lot more people have started working from home. And this has started with COVID. But I don't think that there's any reason to believe that it's not going to continue long after COVID. I've seen. Businesses in downtown Sandy saying, our folks are going to start working from home and that's not going to change after COVID. So I think we may be seeing a shift in families needing to have multiple cars. If people are working from home. Is it too early to tell? Do you have any thoughts on that?
Ethan, I don't know if you guys have incorporated that into your research. As far as I can tell. I think it's, it's a little bit early, but a lot of the cities that I'm working with are, are talking about that. And they're thinking that. They're going to go, most families are probably, most families are, would consider going down to one car. With one parent or one person is working from home and then, you know, having a car to do trips with. Ethan, what, what are you seeing or hearing?
Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty, pretty exactly, you know, the same that I'm hearing. I think. It is, it's hard to know, right? Because we don't know what's going to happen in the next six months, let alone the next six years and beyond. So. You know, we're, we're basing the standards off of really 2019 data is what we use. To do our analysis of vehicle ownership across the state and standards in place in medium sized cities across the state. Today, or you know, a couple of months ago. So it's a very fluid situation. So we'll, we'll come back and reassess if we need to. That's always an option for, for state rules. They're, they're kind of open for amendments if there's the need to do that. So.
I guess, I, that's helpful to me. Of my own.
Oh, yeah, we're hearing it.
That's helpful to hear. I guess I'm, I was asking the question, not only for myself, but just for my fellow commissioners. To be thinking that, you know, to stop and think about the fact that our, as technology has changed. And, and then the pandemic has kind of thrown us into this realignment that. Our past vision of more and more cars, I think for a whole lot of reasons, we're going, we're probably going to be going in another direction. So I think we could probably be conservative. We don't need, I don't think we're going to need a lot of parking spaces. I think if anything, we're going to go in the opposite direction. But that's just my two cents.
If I, if I could, Chair.
Go ahead.
I, so as part of our. Analysis and thinking through the rules associated with, with off-street parking and. The maximum minimums and the ceilings and all that kind of stuff as we're drafting those rules, we're really thinking about. You know. Does the developer, does a developer still have the ability to provide additional off-street parking spaces if they need to? You can think of a duplex unit that's three or four bedrooms. They're going to be having large families live in them. And that's the kind of target market. In order to rent that unit or sell that unit, they're likely going to be providing additional off-street parking spaces, whether that's in a garage. Or on a carport or some kind of side driveway or something like that. We felt really comfortable that the market really will drive that.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we, you know, if we, I guess my concern is when I use the word conservative, I would be. Conservative, assuming that we might, we would need them. Because, you know, people, people react very well with change. I agree with Hollis 100% that a lot of employers are figuring out. That some of the norms that they've had are not necessarily there. And, you know, AEC is one, you know, for example, as Kelly knows, you know, they. Now have a whole floor that they're willing to rent out that they usually have people in. But. On the other hand, you know, Americans, we've been through this where, you know, we, we got really efficient and we're all going to buy small cars. When gas got to $4 a gallon, then gas goes to 250 and everybody's out there buying them a big car again. So. You know, business knows better than actually we do, you know, how to predict, you know, trends, you know, of how it's going to go. But. I think that Ethan made a good point, and that is the, the person buying, you know, is going to make sure they can sell it at some point in time. And, you know, we maybe think of a traditional duplex is like, almost like a one bedroom apartment. Well, that might be a stereotype that we might not want to fall into. So, yeah, that just, you know, I, I'm just kind of a little bit lurried. I've seen some of the parking problems. But 15 years on the commission, I've seen developments we've put in and just scratched our head on how they were going to do parking. And I think even on the Nicholas Glen subdivision, I know we've all been up in that area because of the Bailey Meadows. And some of people testified there on how many vehicles were everywhere. And that, that's R2, by the way. Even though it's a single family detached homes, it's still R2. So. I, I guess I would say we would, we'd want to plan on each one potentially having two. And if we end up with one, that's fine. But. You know, when you build a building that may be worth being in a spot for 40 years, sometimes you can untoll that bill very quickly.
I, I think that what we did a few years back when we had the one off-street parking made a big. A big, many developers go back in the middle, look at the curb cuts. How the alignment of driveways were just spacing out. As opposed to how they were chopping up things and not thinking about it. So I think that was a step in the right direction. And my own belief is that the bigger problem with the parking is not that there isn't parking. But so many people use the garage as the mini storage. Okay, or the boat, et cetera. So you have it there, but it's all, the space is taken up. And I don't think any of us here are going to change that. Dynamic, you know, on it. So.
Before us bedroom, you know?
Chairman, do we need to make decisions on the, on our recommendations before time runs out? We only have about 10 minutes left.
Well, first of all, we don't need to make any decisions. We're providing input to staff. We're going to see this in January. So. I would suggest we just, if you have any burning comments or thoughts, you know, we definitely have Jennifer and Ethan here. Chance of getting begin might be a little low. So I would. To ask them, you know, questions if you have any.
I have one more than Chair. This is really around the, the recommendation or the question about triplex, fourplex cottage. Clusters. And this is really just more about impact. So with House Bill 2001, does that mean. R1 can have multiple building types on the same property? Like you could do a fourplex, a triplex and a duplex conceivably to meet the requirement, that it meets the requirement?
I can, I can try to answer that one. So are you talking about all, all three of those in conjunction with one another, all on one lot? So the definitions that we've. Come forward with in the rules for quadplexes, triplexes and others are structured in a way where I don't think that would be allowed. So the, like for quad, quadplex, for example, just means any four units on a lot. So that use of a lot in that definition would. I think put a, put a stop to developers saying, I'm just going to build a ton of quadplexes on, on this lot.
That's what I was asking. I wanted to know what the developer possibly could and couldn't do.
Yeah, I think our density, our density requirements that we have in the code would probably just preempt that physically, you know, Chris, from happening. You know, like in our, in our one, you know, it basically says, you know, minimum lot size is 5,000 to 5,500. So.
I was just concerned that a crafty developer might try to articulate a couple of different buildings on the same lot. And, and, and use House Bill 2001 as their, as their. and, and, and use House Bill 2001 as their, as their, you know, their, their crutch to get in there. And it wasn't going to hold, you know, it doesn't seem very practical to me. And I don't think our residents would want it. So I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something they could, they could squeeze in.
And there's a, there's a couple interesting, I think Sandy's sitting in a little bit of an interesting spot at the moment. Um, so not required to allow triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters or any of those kind of higher level middle housing types. Um, so that means they're not subject to the same rules as those large and metro cities are. And some of those rules are um, pretty strict in the way of how you apply density and where you can, where you're allowing these middle housing types and so on and so forth. So if the city was interested in, in allowing tries, quads and cottage clusters and townhomes, they could do so in a way that would be quote unquote, non compliant with House Bill 2001. Um, but maybe use some standards that um, that we prohibit in House Bill 2001, uh, but still allow those housing types. Do you, do you see what I mean? So um, you know, like maximum density, for instance, is kind of capped uh, for townhomes in, in the HB 2001 rules for larger metro cities. But that cap would not exist for the city of Sandy, city of Sandy.
Great information. Thank you.
Uh, so before we wrap up the work session, I did want to.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, we appreciate DLSD participating. Um, I did want to get some direction. So Emily knows how to write some of this code. Um, so kind of looking at this, are you, is the commission open to the idea of duplexes and ADUs on the same property? Or do you want to see uh, draft code language that's written to exclude having the combination of duplexes with ADUs? Or do you want to just see it in certain zones? What's your kind of general feeling on that?
I'm open to it, Kelly.
I'm open to it as well.
Yeah, my good feeling is this fine. My, I, what I have to try and get out of my head is I'm thinking of lot size and stuff. And it's that we can allow it, but if we physically ever do it, it's another story.
Yeah, that was my thought is like, how can you even fit uh, duplex and an ADU on some of the lots that we have in Sandy?
Probably had to be a larger, so the guy that is proposing it has like a half an acre. So in that case, he can meet the density requirement and get everything on there and even provide more parking. So um, yeah, so I think there are opportunities, but on your typical individual lot within a subdivision, yeah, it's going to be pretty challenging. Um, so one of the other ones, do you want Emily to look at writing it? That we would be having requirements of side by side or tandem? Or are you less interested in even having that as a requirement? What are you guys thinking on that one?
And I'm just thinking of tandem might some more sense.
I, I don't have a, I don't have a preference. Uh, I don't think side by side necessarily works. I just think the two, two space minimum requirement is what we should be more generic with and allow them to make it however the, the builders use fit.
Okay, how about design standards? So uh, staff is inclined to just keep it like it is. We think it's working pretty well, but we just wanted to get feedback. If you guys want us to look at uh, reducing design standards or eliminating them for duplexes, but I don't think anybody would want that, but.
I would make them the same.
I, I.
Family.
Yeah, I think it's really important that they're the same.
The same.
Yeah, status quo.
And then the final one I had, just to give us some more input on is, are you open to the idea of increasing the ADU size above the 600 square feet? Um, to what staff's proposed, or do you have any other thoughts on that?
I'm okay with 600, 800.
As well.
It makes sense that the sweet spot you say is in the seven, 730 range.
Has anybody um, a question for Ethan is are, are ADUs generally one story? Or um, is it frequent that they make them, you know, multiple story?
That's a really good question. I think um, you see a lot of like one and a half stories with a loft, uh, quote unquote, one and a half stories. Uh, just because you can get that additional living space, which for the developers is beneficial. But um, I think it depends mostly on the market. If, if the housing prices will allow it, it's probably two stories. But um, there's, that doesn't, doesn't mean one story is not feasible. So I'm sorry, I don't have a more concrete answer.
Does, does an ADU on a lot by definition become a rental house?
Um, most likely. Uh, there, there are some, there's some ability to do a condoization or some sort of lot division or something like that. But that's up to the, that's probably a unique situation for the, for the city to allow that.
But that's why I guess we might want to, I guess that's what we might want to think about. You know, I live in a neighborhood that has probably some of the larger lot sizes in around. That if a person wanted to, at least you'd have the area um, to do it. But then next question is, see, I don't know, you buy it, you may own the land, right? So that means you got to do um, a lot line changer or split a lot.
Right, yeah, unless you, unless you do a condoization, which has all sorts of other strings attached, so.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't let them split the lot because the ADU would then be the primary residence and it wouldn't meet the minimum lot size. But yeah, I think the condo would be the only way to really do that on, on a lot like in your subdivision, Dom.
Okay, well, we, we're getting, we're also pretty close to seven. So, you know, I think maybe it's time to wrap it up. Um, my suggestion is we do take maybe five minutes because the next one is, is hearing is going to probably take several hours. And, you know, as opposed to getting three hours in and um, you know, people being concerned, maybe just take a quick break right now for five minutes and then we'll open up the meeting at like 7:05.
Thank you.
Okay with that.
Thank you, Ethan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer and Ethan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good night. It sounds like you have a very long night ahead of you.
No kidding. Yeah, thanks. Thanks for having me. And I'm, I'm more than happy to come back again if you have additional questions, so just let me know.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, you know, hit something with a gavel. We'll open the uh, October 26th meeting of the Sandy Planning Commission at 7:05 PM. And uh, call the roll call.
Oh, you almost caught me mid, mid bite. That was close. Um, Commissioner Losowski.
Here.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
You're muted.
I can.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Mobley.
Here.
Commissioner Maiten.
Here.
And Vice Chairman Carlton.
Here.
And Chairman Crosby is excused.
Okay, in your packet, um, you have the minutes from our September back up here. What date was it? Our September 28th meeting? So any um, comments, corrections that you'd like to bring?
I'll make the motion. We accept the planning commission meeting minutes of September 28th as presented.
Second to that.
Okay, it's been moved by, by uh, Commissioner Losowski and seconded by, by Hollis. All those in favor, say aye, raise your, raise your thumb, your hand, good way to vote. Looks like it's uh, six to zero, Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the time that we uh, we take to allow people from the audience, uh, the attendees, anybody who would just like to uh, communicate to the planning commission on something that's not on the agenda this evening, but would like to address the planning commission on non, non agenda items. Uh, if you're, want to do that, if you're on the, the Zoom meeting, you know, you go ahead and raise your hand and, and Kelly will, will um, mute you. Uh, if you're on the phone, I believe it's star nine. So uh, Kelly.
I see one person, Kathleen Walker, and I'm gonna uh, allow her to talk now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, thanks for letting me talk. I um, know you all did a workshop tonight. And um, in looking at some of the um, um, aspects that you were deciding on, one of the things that I've been hearing a lot about from people around town is the limited amount of parking in many of our neighborhoods. And the on-street parking is limited. Um, so there's quite a bit of frustration from folks that um, they don't already have enough parking. And I guess the concern that I would express to you is the idea that can, the consideration of, of both allowing ADUs to not have any parking. Is that what you recommended? Just I, like, like that clarified, I, you know, I realize I can't ask and answer questions here. But the, the concern is that you've allowed ADUs to be built with no additional parking when that's just going to add to the problem. And then the other, especially considering what somebody said is that those will likely become rentals. And then the second thing was, is that um, uh, the idea that you would have duplexes, um, again, having separate family units, of course, and that's not um, that big of a deal. But then allowing only um, one parking spot per duplex rather than two. Um, you know, they, they basically serve as two single family homes there. And to um, cut the parking in half, again, just exacerbates the already um, big problem that we have there with um, insufficient um, on-street parking. Um, limit to, you know, people don't put stuff in their garage, they don't put their cars in the garage. So real concern, just heard a lot of folks around town, um, very concerned about that. So might want to consider, consider those parking restrictions when you uh, make a recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Um, so wait a second here and Kelly, let me know if you, if you see someone raise their hand or.
Yeah, just, just for consistency sake, I know uh, Ms. Walker's address, but can you just say your address for the record, Kathleen?
Uh, uh, am I still on?
Yes.
Uh, I'm sorry, one, I should know the routine, 15920 Southeast Black Road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I do not see anybody else with their hands raised.
Okay, um, we'll go to the next item on our agenda, which is the director's report. So uh, Kelly, you're, you're on.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'll address Ms. Walker's concerns first. Um, House Bill, I don't know how much of the previous work session she called or not, but just for other people and her uh, that are all listening, is that House Bill 2001 at the state level for cities over 10,000, which we are, it requires that we eliminate um, off-street parking requirements for ADUs. So I hear the concern uh, that Mrs. Walker voiced, but we're gonna, we're not going to be allowed as of whenever we pass um, the House Bill 2001 considerations or at the very, um, you know, as of June, no matter if we pass anything or not, ADUs will not be able to have a requirement to have additional off-street parking spaces. So that's going to be across the state for all cities over 10,000. Um, so we, it's not that the planning commissioner, city council has a choice on that, that's just going to be required. The other thing uh, now she also asked about was the duplex units. We have to buy 2000, House Bill 2001, kind of the same deals the ADUs. We cannot require any more off-street parking spaces for a duplex than we require for a single family dwelling. So for example, a single family dwelling, right now in the city of Sandy, you have to have two off-street parking spaces. Right now by code, you have to have two per dwelling for a total of four for duplex. As of the end of June, or whenever we pass the House Bill 2001 code changes, which I'm hoping is before that, the city of Sandy will not be able to enforce that any longer. So that, that code requirement will no longer be enforceable. For us to do so would be a violation of House Bill 2001, and I'm sure we'd be subject to all sorts of fines. Um, so the new code that we're going to have to adopt uh, per state statute is going to have to have the same requirement. So if it's two off-street parking spaces for a single family home, it will be two for a duplex. And I, and I understand and sympathize with people that have concerns about that. But that is not something that the city of Sandy Planning Commission or City Council will have any ability to uh, change or modify. That's just going to be what the state's going to make us do, so. Sorry for anybody that's listening to that, but that is pretty much what we're faced with at this point as far as parking is concerned. Um, to go through my director's report, I wasn't, you know, I, I laid out a whole bunch of items. Every month I'm gonna, we do a council report on the second council meeting of the month. Excuse me, that includes the planning division, building division and economic development, which are all under the purview of development services, which I oversee. So what I'm going to try to do is strip out the ones that are most pertinent to the planning commission and then put them in a revised director's report that I'll be presenting to you. Um, so this will be kind of the format. I wish I could put spaces between the bullet points, but our system doesn't allow us to do that. So it, it's kind of clunky to read all of it. Um, so a lot of these things you are already aware of. Um, and then I also give every quarter, single family home updates to the city council on how many we've issued and how many lots are remaining. So quarterly, the next one will be in January, you'll also see that. And then as you can see on the second page, we are um, working on the Pleasant Street Master Plan and the Downtown Walkability Assessment again. Shelley Dennison is working on both of those plans. And we hope to have those before you in the early part of 2021, which I know it's been a long hiatus, but we're, we're finally back on it and we hope to adopt something uh, in 2021. And then also the great news, um, we got a TGM grant in 2018 from the state of Oregon to revise our transportation system plan. Mr. Mobley was on our review committee for looking at different consultant services. We hired DKS for the TSP. We then, um, one of the council goals was to also look at a bypass feasibility assessment. Um, we got some money from ODOT for that as well, and we've hired DKS to do that planning as well. And both uh, the assessment and the TSP both kicked off in the last month and DKS and associates, planning staff, mainly myself right now and other staff within the city um, are working with ODOT to update the TSP and to create a bypass feasibility assessment for the first time in, in Sandy. Um, you probably saw in the last couple of weeks, they were doing counts. I think it was last week, they were giving traffic counts. Um, we had delayed the counts two times, one time due to COVID um, and the reductions in people traveling. We were set to do the counts on, I think it was the weekend, the second weekend in September. And because of the wildfires, we had to once again call the counters and tell them, yeah, this is probably not a good time to be looking at traffic counts again. So DLCD and uh, or I mean, DKS and ODOT were relieved that finally we got to do the counts. And so we just did those. And they're going to do a factor or an adjustment because of school not being in session this year. So I don't, I don't, I'm not a transportation engineer by any means. So I don't know what that factor is going to look like, but they're somehow going to try to quantify um, the reduction in trips around town locally because of school not being uh, in brick and mortar this year. So it's going to be an interesting study and I'll keep you guys updated on that. If there's any other questions on my report, um, I would welcome them. So that's, that's all I had for today.
I like the format. Thank you. That's great.
Yeah, it'll probably change over time as I do these more often, just so you know. Uh, anyways, so yeah, this is what it looks like for now. Maybe in a couple of months, it'll look a little fancier, once I've done a few of them.
Chairman, just one more comment. Uh, Kelly, I, I'd like to give a shout out to Shelley and her Facebook post on behalf of, of your department. Uh, she posted another one in October and I, I, I enjoy getting that brief update. It reminds me to continue to go out and, and look at things in the city. And when she does it, it's, she really gives a positive spin to it and, and, and gives real facts. So I just wanted to give a shout out to her and her, her great work on social media.
Yeah, it's fantastic, isn't it? Um, she's going to be doing another one on working with. Yeah, it's fantastic, isn't it? She's gonna be doing another one on working with Emily on the Hood Street daycare. And we're, even though the Hood Street daycare is a type two application, so it's only gonna be staff review. We thought that it was a good opportunity to do a YouTube video and kind of share with the public what's being proposed at that location as well.
It's a great representation of transparency. I love it.
I noticed that this views plan development is on our agenda for next month and generally what, what area of the city is that in? I mean, what quadrant?
Yeah, I try to be somewhat vague on these only because I don't want to give too much information, but I do think it's a good idea to put the location of some of these like that one. So that's basically behind Johnson RV. And then also to the west of Johnson RV where the the Nap Tree Farms are located.
Okay.
Sorry, you caught me mid-bite. So it's, it's on Vessel Loop Drive. Johnson RV.
Okay. Well, appropriately named, they probably have some lots there that might have views.
Yeah, I think that's the intention.
Any more questions for Kelly? If not, we'll just go to our Commissioners' time or anything, any comments individual Commissioners would like to make within ourselves.
Chairman, I just want to say I, I appreciate the, the meeting we had before this, just to discuss House Bill 2001 and then listening to the residents or Kathleen Walker's comments, I just encourage all residents to go back and, and review House Bill 2001. She said some key words in there like decision and Kelly reiterated, we don't make those decisions. I think it's important for the community to know that we're bound by that House Bill 2001 and what it regulates. So please read up and review that. It's not your Planning Commission that's creating the havoc for you. It's the, it's the change in the code that we have to adopt. And as resident myself, I'm frustrated with some of the parking struggles that I have in my own community as well and looking for ways to improve that for everyone. But with this, with this House Bill 2001, we're, we're really at the mercy of what's written in, in the statute. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. You know, a lot of the folks in Sandy obviously don't maybe necessarily know how the Planning Commission works or even the City Council until something affects them and then they, they do. So yeah, one thing I enjoy or appreciate are the people that come to the Blank Commission meetings who testify. You know, one, we want to hear what you say, but we also hope that for those that are listening, try to pick up on the process. So they could, you know, kind of understand at least the way that we, you know, we, we work.
And to add on to that, that's always been, since I've been on that for 10 plus years, it's the conception in the general public of the being the Planning Commission, we're really the, you know, we only see things that don't quite fit in and our job is to apply the code to that and to interpret variances, conditional uses, et cetera. So I've shared this with Kelly, I wish we had more planning to really get ahead of doing the major traffic studies, you know, the sewer work, et cetera, to really plan out the city for tomorrow. But we're, we're really more of the planning, the, the Review Commission for exceptions.
Yeah, that is, that is important, you know, you know, as this, just to come across in straight, simple talk, you know, essentially if somebody, for some reason doesn't want to or can't go over the rules, the code, then they come to us. If they're going by all the rules, we never see it and Kelly can point to citizens. There's certain, I mean, structures, a lot of things have been built around, particularly in the commercial district. No, they went by the code, we never saw it and it went up. So we're kind of the, well, two things, we're kind of the exceptions group, you know, and but that's not necessarily bad because when you write rules, they're kind of in general, when you start doing something specific on a piece of ground, sometimes things don't fit. So, you know, that's why we have the concept of variance, et cetera. So anybody else?
Yeah, I have an announcement that I wanted to let my fellow Commissioners know that my term is up at the end of this year and I will not be applying for another term.
Well, John, best of luck. We understand.
So, so I guess that makes, I, well, thank you, John, for, for your time and effort. But it sounds like then we're, we're gonna be losing both you and Todd at the end of the year. So is there any update on, have there been any applications to fill those? Any chairs vacancies? What's the deadline? What's the cross the timeline right now in terms of decision making?
I think Kelly can answer that. He kind of briefed us on it a little bit, but might have been affected by the, by jury being out of town.
A new applications to be due by October 31st and then interviews to take place in either November, sometime November, early December with appointment back in January is how I understood it.
So Commissioner Main, you're submitting your application, correct?
I already have.
Okay. So I've only received one application, I guess, in addition to Mr. Main. So more likely than not, we're probably gonna send it out another week or so. Unless we get a slew of applications towards the end of this week, but I've already talked to the speed recorder, Mr. Prady, and I think we're gonna extend it out another week irregardless, especially with you know, how busy everybody's been with back-to-school fires, election. And hopefully that will give some people another week after the election early next week to submit if they're interested. So.
Chairman, I have, I have one comment to make on that.
Kelly, are we, are you?
Go ahead, Chris, and then Hollis.
Kelly, are you doing?
Go ahead.
Is the city doing the outreach in terms of invite, inviting people to participate and put their hat in the ring, their ring in the hat? Hat in the ring?
At the ring. Not really. I mean, we've put it on Facebook, we've put it on some social media sites. We put it on our website, I think. Other than that, probably not a lot, but I don't think traditionally we've done a lot of, are you saying like recruiting? Is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah, I mean, I just, I'd like to see us, you know, try and get as much interest as possible. And I'd also like to see us, you know, maybe go out another couple of weeks because there has been so much upheaval with the, with the fires and the COVID and the school stuff. And, you know, if we could, it looks like, you know, we're gonna have some changes in the City Council coming up. So maybe it would make sense to give another couple of weeks and try and get more people interested, especially if we're losing two Commissioners. I think, you know, we want to have as full of a slate as possible.
Yeah, I think, so two thoughts on that. I think extending it out another week or two is a good idea. However, I do think we need to move forward with the interview. I'm hoping they just reappoint Commissioner Main. I, I hope that's a pretty quick, easy decision. I don't, I don't see why it wouldn't be. And then I hope the other person that's applied, they move forward with the interview relatively soon. Because I would like to see. They'll reappoint Commissioner Main and they don't interview the other person. We're literally down to four people after the end of the year, which means if somebody doesn't come, we're, we're not in quorum. So I, I think it's important to extend the deadline. However, I also think it's important to just probably move forward with Commissioner Main and the other person that is applied. See if they're interested in appointments and reappointments and then continuing to leave the position, the other seat open. Because I don't want to see us kind of get bogged down and waiting for more applicants to model and then have a deficient Planning Commission and not build me quorum on some months.
Okay.
I think, I'm thinking the same. I'm just, I just want to make it as, yeah, same thing.
Well, Chairman, that was gonna be my comment. So I'll, I'll jump in real fast. I was just gonna say, over the last couple of months, and this is the problem with me following social media and taking to heart all the residents' comments. We have had over 100 people, different residents comment about how poorly the Planning Commission was and how we should be replaced or certain members should be replaced. So this is on the public record. Anybody who wants to come join us, please put in your application. We, we would love to have you on our team. So you can learn and experience what we have to go through and understand. Sitting, sitting on the chair, posting comments about the poor decision-making, isn't getting it done. We need your help. If we're losing two Commissioners, I am, I'm begging the public to step up and join the community and join us and help us for the city's future.
Okay. Well, and I think, I'll be honest, Chris, what I would, I would suggest is that when, you know, it's easy to be on the outside in and, you know, show up and throw rocks or whatever. When you're in the middle of it, all of a sudden there's a whole new scope. You know that you know, being new and we only have a certain latitude. So I think part of the issue is a lot of the community just thinks that we can do anything we want and they can do anything they want. And if they want to join the Commission, I'd love to see them here. They find out, you know, what we really can do and cannot do. So part of the process or part of the solution, that's what I would suggest, which I think Chris is what you were saying.
It's just, I, I've got this, I've got this book I've been learning for a year and a half and I, I just, I, I take everything that our residents say true. I listen to everybody. And I just hear, ever since Billy Meadows, there's been a lot of bashing and I'm, all those people that said that we were not doing our jobs, I'm looking for them to come join us and help us, help us improve, help us do things differently and make an impact into the city because we want to make it better for our own families as well as yours and our children beyond. So please come, come and help us.
And they might find we actually are doing our jobs. They just may not like the answer, which is just the way it is. So that, that was a good discussion. Are we ready to move on to the, to the Bull Run Terrace agenda item? Click around. Okay, David will go through the, we'll go through the drill. I'd like to open up at 7:31 PM, the continuance of the hearing on Application 19 dash oh five oh CPA ZZ sub SAP tree Bull Run Terrace. First of all, I'd like to call for any abstain, abstentions from the hearing body. No one? Call for any conflict of interest. Okay, hearing done. Like to poll the body for any ex parte contact other than what you may have disclosed at the, the prior hearing. Okay, so now I'd like to call for any challenges to members of the hearing body. If you, in the public, if you choose to bring a challenge, remember you need to raise your hand and wait to be recognized or, you know, hit pound nine to raise your hand if you're on the phone. Be okay to proceed, Kelly?
Uh, yeah, I don't see anybody that's giving a challenge.
Okay. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise, raise that issue later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise a specific issue at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record or failure to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Fields based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designate to respond to the issue precludes any action for damages in circuit court. Before we move to the, the staff report, which is next, I'd like to, you know, just make a couple, a couple of comments. First of all, I want to double check with David. We have five things, three of them are type four and a couple are type two. If we get to the end of the, of the evening and if there's a motion to be made, it's, is all of them are wrapped up in one motion? Is that the way we, we would do it?
Yeah, it's gonna all be sent on to the council, even though there's some that are not necessarily, would be decisions that actually even Planning Commission would make the type twos, but yeah, it all will go one motion's fine.
Okay. And since you already said it, one of my checklist is for the, for the, our, our information and for the public. Type four means that the council, the City Council, actually making the decision on the proposals that are related to the type four. So, you know, this isn't the last opportunity to talk. And in fact, we as a Planning Commission now are actually acting as a public staff for the council. In other words, we will, we will take a motion, we will vote and that vote will, will be to the, to the, to the council. If the votes, either way, it didn't make difference what the vote is. Basically, it's going to council with the, the vote that we basically have. If that's correct, David.
And my understanding. It's not an appeal. The council will hear it brand new.
Right. And Kelly, okay, so my understanding is it's currently on the agenda for the council in, in December?
Yeah, a date has not been selected yet. I think, I think the city manager is considering having a special meeting just for this hearing. Just because as we know, land use hearings take a long time and not to have it mixed with other agenda items. So I think it will most likely be in December, but I'm not sure of the date yet.
Okay, so just want to make sure that, you know, people make, you know, your testimony, you, you understand what role we're playing here basically in this. The other thing, and I asked the Planning Commission members to, to do this is, is it's important that we focus on, when you hear the staff report and you also hear the, the applicant providing their, their, their presentation that you focus on what I'm gonna call decision evaluation criteria. Because the decision, you know, rests on the evaluation criteria in most, most part, which is in the code. And staff will go over that. So there's a lot of comments that are frequently made. Fortunately, it's important to focus on the evaluation criteria. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and call for the staff report.
Everyone, let me share my screen. Okay, so this is the staff report for Bull Run Terrace. A few things that I'm gonna talk about are things that we already kind of went over in the August meeting. So I'll just sort of give a 10,000-foot view of those items. And then I also want to highlight some changes that the applicant has made to the application since the last time this was in front of Planning Commission back on August 24th. So this is being proposed just south of Highway 26. East of the existing Deer Point subdivision. Right now, there isn't anything developed on the site. And Dubarker Road also right now ends at the, the site. It's currently zoned, R1 low-density residential, R2 medium-density residential and Village Commercial. and Village Commercial. Um, and it has a comprehensive plan designation of Village. So the applicant is requesting, um, three type four items, a zone map amendment, a comprehensive plan amendment, and a specific area plan. They're also requesting two type two, um, items, a subdivision, and tree removal. So I'll go through each one of these things. So, just a little bit of a timeline. Originally, this application went to planning commission on August twenty-fourth. A resident requested that the planning commission grant a continuance, which, um, commission did. Uh, and then we received updated application materials on September twenty-ninth. So, um, everything in the staff report reflects those updated application materials. Um, the applicant made a few updates to their proposal. Um, these are just some key ones. So in addition to, updating a few technical things, uh, they also included, uh, medium density residential lot, which I'll talk about a little more in depth. They removed a stormwater easement. Um, the main point that I want you to take away from this is that it allows for additional tree retention. So, where the homes on Meadow Avenue abut the single family residential lots, there are some trees behind those homes that were originally going to be removed, but because the applicant removed a stormwater easement, um, along that area, um, they're able to retain, some of the trees. So that will allow for additional privacy, um, and additional, you know, aesthetic, um, properties, um, for the existing homes on Meadow Avenue. The applicant is also proposing an easement at the intersection of Dubarker and Highway twenty-six to allow for a traffic signal. And they're also proposing a meandering walkway along the east side of the dedicated parkland, which I'll talk, uh, a little bit more about, later in this presentation. So on the left is the, um, zone map amendment original proposal, which includes R-three, R-one, C-three, and parks and open space. Uh, the main change that the applicant made is, instead of two lots of R-three high density residential, they changed one of those lots to R-two medium density residential. Um, and the intent behind that is to act as a buffer between the existing single family homes on Meadow Avenue, and the high density residential, uh, dwelling units, um, over on the east side of Bull Run Terrace. This is just a table showing the existing and proposed acres for, um, each one of these zoning districts. So R-one will drop from eight point oh five to point five nine. R-two will decrease from five point oh one to one point two three. It's introducing R-three high density residential from zero to six point five, and then slightly increasing the Village Commercial C-three from two point eight four to three point six one acres. This application does require a comprehensive plan map amendment. So, this type of amendment is required in a village area when the maximum density changes by more than twenty percent. So, what that means is when the zone change, um, introduces new maximum density, dwelling unit limits, if that density changes by more than twenty percent, it requires a comp plan amendment. And even with the updated application, um, it increases the maximum density by thirty-two percent. So that does trigger, um, the need for a comp plan map amendment. We did the analysis, looking at the current UGB land inventory, um, and found that it doesn't put anything, any of the land types into a deficit. Rather, everything, uh, maintains, uh, an acreage surplus. Uh, one of the requirements for a comp plan amendment is going through each of the relevant goals in the comprehensive plan, um, and making sure that those goals are met. So, goal one is citizen involvement, um, with the public notices and public hearings. That goal is satisfied. Uh, land use planning, we're, um, we've reviewed this application against, um, the specific code requirements and notified the relevant state agencies like DLCD. Natural resources, uh, we've recommended a condition to install fencing to protect the retention trees. Recreational needs is goal eight. The applicant is dedicating, uh, a portion of the area as parkland, for a, an extension of Deer Point Park. We've also conditioned a few things about making sure that, um, the buildings, I'll talk a little bit about, more about this when I talk about the C-three land on Lot Seven, but ensuring that the buildings, uh, face the park, um, to create an activated frontage. Goal nine, economic development, uh, has to do with making sure that, um, there's an adequate surplus of commercial and industrial land. Um, and like I said in the previous slide, the proposed changes allow for the surplus. Goal ten is housing. Um, this application, especially with the added R-two lot, provides a mix of housing types. So multifamily and single family, um, which creates more options for potential residents. Goal twelve is transportation. A, a goal in the TSP is to connect Dubarker Road to Highway twenty-six, which this project is proposing. And then finally, um, urbanization, uh, which this development does accommodate residential and commercial uses within the UGB. Um, any of the goals that I did not mention are not relevant to Sandy. So, um, lots one through four are proposed to be zoned as low density residential. You'll also notice, on the north end, you can't see it very well, on the, on the, the north end of those lots is track B, that's a, um, stormwater pond. Um, these do meet the density requirements at one single family detached home per lot. Um, one of the things that we had in the last, uh, iteration of this presentation in the staff report, was that we weren't sure if lots three and four, um, had enough buildable area to actually build a single family home on. The applicant provided us with an analysis of that and determined that yes, there is, um, appropriate buildable area on those two lots. Um, this new lot being proposed as a R-two medium density residential is Lot Five. It allows for a maximum of fourteen dwelling units. And the, those dwelling units will be reviewed in a future design review application. Lot six is high density residential R-three. It allows for a maximum of a hundred and thirty units, according to its acreage. Um, and again, um, the, those dwelling units will be subject to a future design review application. The Village Commercial, uh, in Lot Seven, um, the code says that it allows for a mix of commercial and residential uses. Again, any future use on that land will, um, require a design review application. The applicant is also applying for a specific area plan overlay. Um, I'm just gonna read this text. This is lifted straight from the, the, uh, code. Shifting of the underlying zoning district boundaries to accommodate development constraints and land divisions for specific development proposals may be allowed through approval of a specific area plan. The specific area plans are intended to promote coordinated planning concepts and pedestrian oriented mixed use development. Additionally, the applicant is, uh, proposing parkland dedication. They are required, according to the maximum density, to provide one point three one acres of parkland dedication, and they are proposing one point four two six acres. What this means is that, um, that leftover acreage that they're providing, but aren't required to provide, can be applied to the, C-three, the Village Commercial lot, uh, up to thirteen units. So, anything over thirteen units that gets built on that Village Commercial lot will be subject to, uh, fee and lieu, or additional dedication. We are recommending that the design review approval for Lot Seven, that's that Village Commercial lot, needs to include activated frontages, just so that parkland isn't facing, you know, a parking lot on the back of a building, um, just so it's a more pedestrian oriented. Uh, additionally, the applicant provided, uh, a proposal which includes a walkway, a meandering walkway along the eastern portion of that park. Um, and then finally, public comments. Um, there's just a correction to the staff report to finding seventeen. I think it says that twenty-nine public comments have been received. That's incorrect. Um, fifty public comments have been received. These are some of the themes that we found through those public comments. Um, there's a worry about the loss of trees, the capacity of the police to patrol, um, these new dwelling areas, the possibility of criminal activity at multifamily dwelling areas, um, being previously told by, realtors that the land would not develop as residential, the concerns about effects of multifamily housing on property values, and relevance to the comprehensive plan and potential for spot zoning. That is the end of the presentation.
One, one other thing I'll add, um, before we move to the applicant's presentation. I'm, I'm sure though, they will speak more to this, but, there's also a additional stormwater pond that's being proposed between Deer Point and the R-two land, and that will kind of create an additional buffer between the existing houses and any multifamily housing. And then you'll also notice in the packet, and it's also reflected in the staff report, and I'm sure the applicant will go into this as well. But, in, uh, hearing public comments, and also comments from the planning commissioners at the previous hearing, they decided to add a vegetative buffer, and they proposed what that would look like between, the stormwater pond north of Dubarker Road and lots one through four. So, I'm sure the applicant will go into that in more detail. If you want to take a look at it, it is, I believe, exhibit. What exhibit is it here? Oh, exhibit Q. It's called a screening concept plan. And that will kind of give you an idea of some of the additional mitigation efforts that the applicant has decided to do after hearing from the public and from the planning commission. So, I just want to bring up those few other items. That's all I have.
Commissioner Carlton, I think your microphone's not working.
You're not muted, but we can hear you.
This could be our chance. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, well, technology and the usual fix. Just unplug it and plug it back in. Okay, um, go ahead with the applicant presentation. Whoever is the lead, Tracy looks like.
Yeah, I'm gonna be the lead on that. Yeah, thank you. My name's Tracy Brown. I live and work at one seven zero seven five Ford Drive in Sandy. Tonight, we're also gonna have Ray Moore of All Candy Surveyors and Mike Ard, who's the traffic consultant, talking the first piece, and then we'll have, uh, Mike Robinson, talk in, um, the second part of our presentation. So, yeah, as Shelley went into quite a bit of detail, we did submit a revised plan after we heard comments from both the planning commission and the public at the August twenty-fourth meeting. And actually, just stepping back further than that, that plan had been revised from the original plan that didn't include any of the C-three zone property. Um, and it included the three larger lots as R-three completely. And prior to really even deeming that complete, we had revised that to include the C-three property. And then again, we revised it, um, after the Au- August twenty-fourth meeting. So what I'm gonna do is just share my screen, and I could just kind of work through some of those same, similar details that Shelley went into. I do wanted to mention also that Shelley showed the comparison of the acreages of the existing and proposed, and one thing that isn't reflected in the existing is the, one point four three acre park that's proposed to be dedicated. So, in reality, the area associated with the R-one zoning in that existing would be less because likely there would have been a park taken out of that. I just wanted to point that out, so that it's not a true apples to apples comparison. So I'm gonna just share my screen here, and, uh, let's see. So, so I assume you can see the plan that I've shown. Maybe Dawn, if you want to give me a thumbs up, that you can see that. Appreciate it. All right, thank you. So, yes, as was mentioned, this is the proposal. The main changes have to do with Lot Five down here. So as was mentioned, this lot was previously zoned as R-three high density, and now we're proposing it as R-two. In addition, there's a little piece of R-one zoning, and this would be a stormwater detention pond. So effectively, there would be no development directly behind these homes. After we heard some of the concerns from the public regarding the trees along this area, Ray Moore did a further analysis and determined he could actually eliminate that pipe that was going to go along the back of these lots into this storm pond. And so with that, we can retain five additional large trees on the property over here. And I can show you those a little bit better, um, on this plan. This is the street plan, utility plan. Here's the detention pond. Here are these five trees in this area that can be retained, and here's the other detention pond. The meandering path that, um, Shelley referred to is in this location. And that will be kind of refined, the alignment of that would probably be refined as the master plan for the Deer Point Park is, is also refined. So thi- this is kind of a zoomed in look. These are all in your packet, but I thought I would just share these. These are those five trees behind those, those homes there, the proposed homes. These are in a lot, one through four in this project. And it's showing that even with the tree protection zones, those lots can be retained. There is one tree over here that because of its location, can't be retained and still build on this lot. So that will be removed, carefully removed, and the stump will be ground out, you know, not ripped out of the ground to disturb the root, uh, structure of these other trees. This is the, um, landscape kind of concept, screening concept that Kelly mentioned. So it's showing, we, we proposed that to kind of add some additional buffering between the existing residences and the new development. So this area along here, you can kind of see those existing trees popping out a little bit as the, the larger conifers. But in addition to those, in the back of these lots, we're proposing to plant a variety of smaller trees, but, and shrubs to create a additional buffer, as well as the back of the, or the western edge of the storm detention pond over here. You know, the, the street trees will be kind of revi- or visited as the, with construction plans. But this shows kind of a, a concept of how it would look with the street line, treat street lined, uh, with trees, as well as a median, um, up here closer to, uh, Highway twenty-six. These couple of views kind of show kind of a concept, if you're walking along the sidewalk, what it will look like, kind of looking at that, um, buffer area. You know, there's a couple of other little changes that we made to the plan. The radius of this street was changed based on Public Works comments. So we also provided additional, you know, so as I mentioned, there's an arborist report for these trees. We also provided an arborist report for the trees that are proposed to be retained up here next to the highway. This is the bulk of the trees. And actually, the number of trees we're retaining exceeds the minimum requirement by, I think, at least fifteen, I believe, somewhere in that range. And there was some concern in the staff report that trees that aren't being retained but are next to retained trees, how would those be removed? And so the arborists provided additional analysis on that as well, you know, to show that those, you know, we won't go in and tear out the stumps of those. It'll be just ground to the or cut to the ground level. They'll be carefully removed. In addition to the this information, Mike, our transportation consultant on the project, did a revised transportation study to kind of update it based on some of the comments we received from ODOT. So those are the main changes to the plan. I mean, I feel like we have addressed a lot of the concerns. And actually, you know, in terms of the staff report, it's it's not uncommon for us to come to the meeting and say, hey, what about this condition or that condition? And actually, we really don't have those sorts of comments. There's only one condition, and I I sent a memo to Shelley and Kelly. I think it's included in your packet. There's one condition. See, condition A three, which talks about kind of looking at this this driveway, the previous thought for the this dwelling would be would been closer to the this driveway of this structure. And so there was a concern that somebody backing out of lot three and wanting to go out forward would need to encroach onto this lot. And so there was a recommendation in the staff report to have an easement on lot four to benefit the maneuvering for lot three. But, you know, we don't think that will be necessary. And so we'd request that you either eliminate that condition or just add the simple words as necessary to that condition. And that will, you know, if for some reason this the configuration of this home changes and it's it's necessary to have that easement, it could be required, but not have it as a, you know, a requirement per se. I think with that, I'll turn it over to Ray just to go into a little bit more detail about the storm system, and then we'll have Mike Arndt talk about the traffic study.
Good evening. For the record, Ray Moore, All County Surveyors and Planners, and I'd like to thank staff for working with us through this project. And you always tell my guys here, you know, there's always a better way when you're laying out a subdivision, you know, no matter what. And so the more time we've had to work with staff and and the public, you know, there were some good comments. Ron Lesowski had some good comments last time, and so we've tried to listen to everybody. We've tried to meet the code, you know, the best we can. And I think we kind of came up with with a solution hopefully here that that you all will be happy with and in the public. I know nobody's always ever completely happy, but I think we've kind of got out of our way to to get there. I think Tracy and staff is went into quite a bit of detail explaining the pond and whatnot. You know, from an engineering standpoint, it's always more reasonable or more economical to do one detention system. And you have one flow control manhole, and you have less pipes rather than trying to split it up into the two systems. So we were, you know, our first stab at it was, hey, let's do one pond at the low point and, you know, be economical with this thing. So by splitting up the two ponds, it's costing them more money. There's there's a little more expense there. But I think the benefits outweigh the expense that that we have to go through to add the second pond and, you know, that we're saving the additional trees, we're eliminating the storm seresment along the backs of those properties. So there's some substantial benefits by doing what we've done. And I think, like I said, I think Tracy's kind of went through everything, and I really don't have too much more to add. You know, I can answer any questions if you have any right now, or we can turn it over to Todd, and he can talk to you a little bit about traffic. Or Mike, so sorry. Sorry, Todd. I do that a lot. Anyway, if you have any questions, let me know, or I'll turn it over to Mike. Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Arndt with Arndt Engineering. I just want to talk briefly about the couple of changes that were made to the traffic study so that you understand what the difference is between the prior version of the traffic study that you saw at the last hearing versus this current version. There are principally two changes. One is to the proposed development scenario that talks about the number of dwelling units that would be associated with future development in the residential areas. And because of the change in zoning, there is a slight decrease in the number of trips associated with that. We went from having a maximum of one hundred and fifty-eight multifamily dwellings down to one hundred forty-seven maximum multifamily dwellings, and we stayed stable at four single family dwellings under both scenarios. There is a corresponding slight decrease in trip generation associated with those development scenarios for the residential areas. Of course, having less traffic doesn't tend to generate traffic problems. So we did not identify any new traffic problems as a result of that change. The other change that was made is associated with the review that ODOT did of our zoning analysis. When we did our prior zoning analysis, we compared the maximum development scenario under the existing zoning to the maximum development scenario under the proposed zoning. And in doing that, we subtracted out the right of way dedication that we'd be giving for Debarco Road and for some of the local street infrastructure. ODOT objected to that methodology, saying that regardless of whether the property is developed under the existing or the proposed zoning, some right of way dedication is going to be required for this Debarco Road extension. It will have to intersect Highway twenty-six in roughly the same place, and there will have to be some local street infrastructure. So they wanted us to subtract the right of way dedication that would likely be expected under the existing zoning from our calculations. We found that to be a somewhat reasonable request and went ahead and complied with it. When we did that, we found that there is an increase in overall density for the site as you do the comparison and have the same number of acres in the before and after scenarios. As a result of that, we did find that we needed to propose a mitigation for the zone change, that mitigation being a trip cap of three hundred forty P M peak hour trips. And that would ensure that the future development within this property is not going to generate more traffic than what would have otherwise been allowed under the existing zoning. I will note that with the residential development that we're anticipating, that would generate about eighty-six trips, which means that we reserve approximately two hundred fifty, a little over two hundred and fifty trips for future use in that commercial zone. And of course, that development has not been proposed at this time. But we feel that we can easily comply with that, and we don't have a problem with the the trip cap of three hundred forty P M peak hour trips. And if you have any questions about traffic at this point, I would be happy to answer those as well.
All right, I have a quick question.
Okay.
There was some discussion before about the grant of access that would be required for that approach to the highway based on ODOT's comments. It looks like it would be a grant that's needed. Is that is that your understanding of that issue?
That is an open discussion still at this point, and we did provide some feedback to the city that indicated we should comply with whatever the appropriate process is. As Mike Robinson is probably jumping in to tell you, the access control has been broken on Highway twenty-six. We feel like asking for a grant of access, which is typically done when there is no access to a facility, is not the appropriate process to go through, but I'll defer to Mike to explain that if he would like to.
Chair Carlton, can I answer Commissioner Mobley's question? Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Commissioner Mobley, Mike and I looked at the administrative rules that ODOT uses to determine whether you need a grant of access. Access control, as Mike said, is broken. And so the administrative rules say in that case, for a public approach, in other words, Debarco Road, we only need what's called an indenture of access, which means ODOT's approval to move the driveway, the public road approach from its current location on the title report to a different location. So it's it's my opinion that we don't actually need to go through the grant of access problem or process. We're fine with the condition as is. Mike and I hope to be able to have a discussion with ODOT before we get to the city council. And if we need to, we can resolve that issue, but we're confident that we don't need a grant of access.
Okay, so for just keeping the record clean, can I get, Mike, can you say your address for the record? And then Mike Robinson, can you also give your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, and thank you for the reminder. My address is one seven seven nine zero Southwest Dodson Drive, Sherwood, Oregon, nine seven one four oh.
And Chair Carlton, it's going to take me a minute to remember where my office was because I haven't been there since March, but I think it's eleven eleven twenty Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite nineteen hundred, Portland, nine seven two oh four.
Yeah, so I guess just in summary, you know, we appreciate the staff report. We we believe the application does meet the criteria laid out in the staff report as it's been revised in our revised application. And so we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. And otherwise, we hope that you approve our application or recommend approval to the city council. If there's any questions, I'll entertain them now. Otherwise.
I just wanted to thank you for for the extra tree retention and the extra screening. Appreciate the effort you guys put into that.
Yeah, thank you. It just, you know, it was sharpening the pencil and just took a little extra effort and but I think we can make it work.
Okay. Just had a problem for you. Can you hear me? Okay. Okay, if you're listening, you can't hear me, let me know. I unplugged and plugged in again my headset, so. Okay, so right now, there's nothing hot on the plan commissioner's mind you'd like to ask. Just preserve it for later. Okay. All right, so we'll we'll switch now to.
Sorry to interrupt you. So I did. I didn't want to let everybody know that, or I wanted to make sure. It came to my mind once I heard Mr. Robinson speaking. At four thirty, he sent an email to Shelley and I, which I believe I forwarded at five oh one to the commission. We did not have an opportunity to update the online portal system, so it's not reflected online right now. It will be added as an exhibit before the city council meeting. I just wanted to confirm with the with the planning commission that they did receive that.
Okay, and the gist of that communication was what Mr. Robinson said?
Correct. I just realized that neither Shelley or I ever mentioned it tonight, and I just wanted to make sure that I had kind of forgotten about it until I heard Mr. Robinson speaking. I just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Okay, well, it sounds like it's the technical working with ODOT. All right, well, let's return to our our public testimony. As far as guidelines go, you know, try not to repeat something that somebody else has said. In other words, it's perfectly fine to give your testimony and say thumbs up, I agree or or not with an individual person. This this kind of helps with time because our time limit for for testimony is three minutes. And a lot can be said in three minutes, but that allows more more efficient. If you do have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by this body, they must be formally be placed in the record for this proceeding. Do that either before or after you speak, email the materials to the to the planning department at planning at C I dot sandy dot O R dot U S. Or if you have a question on that, you know, let us know. The staff will make sure your evidence is properly properly processed. Also, on your on your testimony, as as we mentioned a little bit earlier before, the commission, you know, focuses a lot on the evaluation criteria, you know, our code seventeen dot twenty-four, seventeen dot fifty-four. Shelley has gone over. One, you know, guides us when it comes to comprehensive plan amendments. The other guides us when it comes to a specific area plan. And so focusing on those and essentially with the effects, you know, the effects, for example, traffic as an example, are are important things to focus on. So now we want to use your testimony, but there are certain things that has been mentioned that by state law, we're really not allowed to consider things like overcrowding of schools, you know, property values, a city services. In other words, it's up to the city to provide the services. Or the one is Chair Cosby always says, you know, the standard one, which my realtor told me there, it would probably would not be developed. When this this area has been within the city now for quite a while, and, you know, has been zoned in a little different way, but it basically has been zoned with R one and R two together with a village commercial for for quite a while. So, you know, they the area, you know, couldn't have been developed without any changes to the zoning. And, you know, the applicant's proposing something different. So we generally take testimony in in three different categories. Generally, three minutes for your testimony, if you're in favor of the proposal. And once we go through that group, the ones who might be opposed to the proposal, and we go through that group. And then if you you're feeling you're neutral, in other words, you don't, you want to be on the record, but you don't want to jump into either one of those two categories, you're welcome to testify, and that'll be the last group. So, you know, with that, I'll call for testimony for those that are in favor as before. If you're on the Zoom call, click the raise your hand button. And if you're on the phone, do star nine. Kelly, as before, will be our person recognizing and muting or unmuting your microphone. So I'll turn it over to Kelly to let us know.
No, I don't see anybody with their hands raised for the in favor comments. Oh, I spoke too soon. Sorry if I mispronounced your name, but it's, I believe it's Vadim. Gosh, I'm like the worst person be doing this because I'm not very good at pronouncing names. Vadim Verbelchuk. So I will unmute you now.
Vadim, it looks like you're, at least it shows you're you're muted. There you go.
Sorry, my bad. I'm on.
Yep.
My wife and I really appreciate the slideshow and showing us the tree privacy and that you guys are keeping some of the trees right behind us. We live right on Meadow, and we really wanted the trees to stay, and that was just really nice to hear that you guys worked around it and kept that there. Just a privacy and you know, and there's houses behind it, not just apartments right behind us. Is it's really relieving and nice to hear that. So thank you, guys.
Vadim, can we get your can we get your address for the record?
Oh, yeah, that is one eight three eight two Meadow Avenue, Sandy, Oregon, nine seven zero five five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Adam. Anyone else? Go ahead and raise your hand. It's star nine.
Yeah, a lot of people, once they finish talking, if you can remember to me. Yeah, a lot of people, once they finish talking, if you can remember to mute yourself or disable talking, I can do it, but otherwise we might hear you talking in the background. As has happened a couple of times tonight already, so just to remind you, once you're done talking, if you can just hit the mute button by your name, that'd be preferred. I do not see anybody else with their hands raised, Mr. Carlton.
Okay. Go take testimony now for those that are against the oppose the proposal. Go ahead and raise your hand or hit star nine.
Okay, I got a few people. The first one up is Stephen Hook. I am now allowing you to speak. You got to unmute yourself on slide. There you go.
Hello, my name is Stephen Hook. My address is one eight zero seven eight Meadow Avenue. I am new to Sandy. I used to live here before, but recently moved here this summer. And I appreciate all the work that has been done from the developers in regards to the concessions that they've been making to meet the requests from the neighbors. Since I'm new, I'm not very familiar with the development code as much as I would like to to be able to speak. However, I would like to speak more in the legislative portion. And that is my concerns regarding parking. We have a lot of issues with parking here in this neighborhood. Lots of trucks and trailers that are associated with that. And my concern is really associated to the high density portion of the application. So with the apartments, there is often not enough parking for all individuals that are within the in each individual apartment home, most having two cars or more. And then that often is not enough for the parking within a structure and then spills out onto the streets. Currently, if I was to have a party over right now, there isn't enough parking for for folks to park on the streets, and they have to park a bit of ways, and we have to help shuttle them in. So those are my my major concerns. It's just really regarding the high density. I have no other concerns with with the other portions of the application.
Okay, thank you. Kelly, turn over to you.
Hold on one second. I'm trying to do like three things at once. Okay, I'm going to remove that person from talking. Okay. The next person that I'm going to allow to speak is Brenda Hoyt, and I am allowing you to speak now.
Hi, good morning, good evening. My name is Brenda Hoyt. I live at four zero four eight five Buck Street in Sandy, Oregon, nine seven zero five five. Again, I want to reiterate the issue of parking. There is at least three cars per household plus a teenage driver. So our neighbor has grown up and now our teenagers are driving. You cannot park two cars parallel on a street. And then fit down, you can barely fit down a third down the middle. We also have fifth wheelers, and ever since COVID happened, nobody's monitoring those. They're all over the street. They are blocking traffic. Also with the ODOT study, are they considering that twenty six is the only way to get to Welch's? Mountain Hood Government Camp, because we can never make a left onto twenty six, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, any holidays, two days before or two days after? That's my question.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. Also for the public, you know, staff, Kelly is is taking notes and Shelley also. So when you ask a question, we will not respond and and answer it when we're saying testimony. But please note, those questions are being recorded, and in the staff recap, staff will, you know, will do their best to answer your questions out of an order. So we're not sitting here and ignoring you being silent. We are just going through the process.
Okay, I have somebody else with their hand raised. It is Ann Rule. And I am going to enable right now.
Good evening. My name is Ann Rule. I live at one eight three six eight Meadow Avenue. And I I'm not, you know, each time you come back with a proposal, it's getting better. But I'm still not. I don't think it's meeting a lot of the criteria that we're doing. I have a letter that I've that I'd like to read to read. I'm asking you to deny the proposed blue run terrace zone change and comprehensive plan being proposed for Sandy. This proposed development does not meet any public need and violates state planning goals. The developers want approval of significant zone changes and comp plan changes without disclosing to city staff, planning commission, or residents what they propose to develop. This violates goal one of the statewide planning goals that calls for extensive public involvement and two way communication. My questions about what is being developed in these large colored block allocations are not answered so that the public can provide input with an incomplete application. We're being asked to approve large scale zone changes, but not allowed to know what will be developed. We suspect they know what they plan to build and have hinted at apartments over over the commercial and high density zone. Once they have this approval, the city must approve high density apartments on over ten acres of land if it meets the new zones codes regardless of what that public wants at that point. State goal number two says cities and counties must build their comprehensive plans on a factual base and follow their plan when making decisions on appropriate zoning. It also says the comprehensive plan zone ordinance are the guiding documents for local government land use decisions. They help create predictable outcomes for the people that live and operate businesses in the community for development of homes, stores, and industries. We brought, we bought houses in this neighborhood based on the predictable outcome that there would be some low density closest to our homes. One row isn't enough. This proposal not only zones nearly all of the land allocations, it totally aligns their locations. Sandy already has considerable acreage zoned for high density and commercial areas. Now we are looking at living right next to a large commercial zone and the agenda packet says will also be high density. This is not what we were promised when we purchased a home in this neighborhood. Instead of single family homes and some possible townhouses, we are looking at a potential for over two hundred apartments, far larger than the recently constructed Sandy Place Apartments that is a hundred and thirty eight units. Sandy Code seventeen point two four point ten says that one of the criteria to consider a zone change is A, to respond to changing conditions and community attitudes. Most of Sandy's residents are not in favor of higher density growth. Many, if not most, would like to slow or stop growth. We know that growth cannot be stopped, but the planning commission's role is to listen to the residents and make decisions based on those attitudes. No conditions have changed that would indicate a need to approve this proposal. In fact, as of the third fastest growing town in Oregon, Sandy appears to have plenty of interest and success developing under existing comp plan and zoning locations. Sandy Code seventeen point two four point seven oh has few criteria for evaluating significant zone changes and comprehensive plan amendments. A, the change is is the best means of meeting the identified public need. There is no public need identified for this zone change. City Resolution twenty dash fifteen listing road projects showed extension of Debarco Road to be benefiting new development a hundred percent. There is no need or benefit to current residents. The developers have stated without evidence that they require this zoning change and comp plan amendment to pay for road developments. The zone change appears to be a ploy to get a maximum amount of benefit from a development. There have been numerous commercial Fred Meyer's Forestry Service Office and Residential Developments Sandy Bluff, Bornstead, and Castaglia Village that required the developer to cover the costs of road construction and highway turn lanes. The developer wanting to quickly depart for more depart with more profit is not a reason for the city to greatly increase housing density and commercial land and adversely affect its residents, especially those in the adjacent neighborhoods who bought their homes with existing loaning allocations and will live with any development for the foreseeable future. The argument that this zoning change is needed to bring more more affordable housing to Sandy is also not backed by facts. The recently constructed Sandy Place Apartments on Sandy Heights and Bluff Road are charging a thousand two hundred and fifty five for a studio apartment, a thousand four hundred for a one bedroom, and a thousand six hundred and fifty for two bedrooms, and nineteen twenty five for a three bedroom apartment. And of course, there are deposits first time and last month's rent. These rental prices are comparable to paying a mortgage on a three bedroom home. There is no compelling public need or interest in seeing our town slowly re rezoned piecemeal by developing by skepticism with the developers refusal to reveal any details about their planned development before the zoning comp plan changes are finalized. If they really want to convince our planning commission and city council and residents of their good intentions, they would be upfront with the details of the proposal. We should deny this zoning change and comp plan without further delay and encourage them to come back with a plan that fits within the existing zone and city codes. We understand that this parcel will develop, but it should develop under an existing zoning and code change. I guess I would also.
Before you go on anymore, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna let the commission know that's been about six or seven minutes, so.
Sorry.
I don't know if you want to, if you want to ask Miss Rule to wrap wrap up her comments, but I think we're given more time than we typically allow.
Well, you're you'll be submitting your comments and writing, is that correct?
Yes, but I, my last thing is I would like to ask for continuance. I understand that you guys received a seven hundred page document last Monday, and I believe that each of you have other jobs. And I'm just, I'm concerned that that's not adequate time to really look at that, the new documents and to make this type of decision on that. Thank you for your time and for your dedication in in the jobs that you have here.
Okay, thank you. Maybe, you know, David, could you mainly quickly ask, answer the question of, you know, of the idea of a continuance, if that's possible, just so we take care of that right now?
Sure. So technically, you wouldn't have to grant one tonight, since this is a continuation of the the hearing. It's not the first night, first evidentiary hearing. You, you know, did get a lot of information, so I think it's really a question of what the planning commission is comfortable with. The hundred and twenty day clock that normally drives a lot of these decisions for various applications technically doesn't apply to this one because there is a comp plan amendment that's associated with the application. And whenever you have one of those, there's no, the hundred and twenty day clock is is technically not applicable. So you really have, it's up to you if you wanted to keep the record open, or if you wanted to continue the hearing, that would be your choice, but it's not compelled tonight. I just want to state one other point of clarification as well, commissioners, is that you have seven hundred some pages before you, but that's that's the record in full. That's not what was submitted since the last hearing. The only things submitted since the last hearing are the exhibits that are labeled in red. So the only the only exhibits that the applicant has submitted since the last hearing are exhibits J through R. And a lot of those are like one page long each. They're not gigantic documents. The entire narrative that Mr. Brown put together, which is exhibit B, that that was unchanged, and that's one of the largest documents you would have seen. A lot of the public comments that you are in red within the document I I I through C C C C, those were all received as of the last hearings, so you should have received those back in August. The only reason why they're in red in the document before you tonight is because they didn't make it to the original staff report, but you actually did receive those about two months ago. So the the only things that are really new are exhibits J through R from the applicant and revised agency comments D D D D and E E E. And the half page exhibit that Mr. Brown forwarded and the email that Mr. Robinson sent at four thirty. Other than that, all of the other changes in the seven hundred pages are reflected in the staff report. So if you look through the staff report, and this goes for the public as well, we color coded everything. So the only changes since the August meeting are in red, where there's additions are or are in strike through blue where there's deletions. You know, I didn't take the time to look at how many pages that actually reflects, but I'm guessing it's probably five or less. So there's not a lot of additional. I'm not trying to convince you to continue it or not, but I am trying to say that there's not seven hundred pages. There might be forty pages, which probably a third of those are maps and diagrams. So I just want to, I just want to make sure everybody on the call, including the commissioners, are aware that how much material was actually sent to you since the last meeting.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Kelly. And also as a reminder to the public and to the planning commission, on this one, we are, we are forwarding it on to council, which will basically start a brand new evidentiary hearing with this record. So it isn't the only time that the public will have a chance to address, and that time will actually be addressing the decision making body. So Kelly, I'll just let you do your thing and let us know if you have another handbrake.
Yeah, we do. It's it's a phone number, so I can't give a name. It's five oh three two five zero zero two five two, and I'm going to allow them to speak now.
Hi, my name is Zoanna McKenzie, and my address is one eight four two eight Meadow Avenue. So some of our biggest concerns, being so close to the development, is the influx of traffic and parking due to the commercial and high medium density. Also to piggyback off Ann, that we do completely agree that having more transparency in the buildings that are going to be built that way that our neighborhood and community can provide effective feedback that is constructive and helpful due to the buildings that are actually going to be built. That was our main concerns, but we do appreciate everyone's time and consideration and especially working together to keep the trees. We really do value that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I do not see anybody else. Chairman Carlton, unless you just want to give him another minute here. Nope, I do not see anybody else with their hands raised.
Okay. And also keep in mind, those who already submitted written comments for the August twenty fourth meeting, you know, they're in the record, and the commissioners have read those comments, so. The last category is if you're if you're neutral, if you don't know your for or against, which you would like to make a comment, go ahead and raise your hand now.
Okay, I have one hand, a couple of hands. The first one that was up was Kathleen Walker. I will allow her to speak now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um I'm actually um speaking kind of on behalf of the Parks Board. And one of the things, um I appreciate all the um work that's been done on this. Shelley, you've been doing a fabulous job. Your Facebook stuff is really helpful at getting the word out. Um a couple of things, though, is that there doesn't appear to be any documentation of the um Parks Board in this development, which there usually is. Um and so we talked about this at a couple of meetings, and I know. Like at the September meeting, we were asking about it and we're told that they're still changing things up and. Cause we were waiting to kind of get things more finalized to make a recommendation to the planning commission on that, and I don't believe that ever happened. So um it would be um helpful to have the Parks Board uh input um in the record. And the other thing as part of that, um that was, that I will share with you that was in the record or that was part of our discussion. Was the um, the parcel that's being proposed. The, the way the calculation of what acreage is, is required um has to do with how many units are being developed. And so what, what still isn't kind of very clear is. You know, when you consider that you can have up to twenty units in the commercial zone uh per acre. And twenty units per acre in the R one, R three, excuse me, then um I think when you kind of do all the math of all the acreage you have. And the maximum allowed, you're up till about one point nine acreage, one point nine acres of parkland. That um uh acres or, you know, again, fee in lieu of. And so I think there was some mention earlier in the process about. They aren't donating as much as they require. In fact, I'm not, you know, that, that's something that we, we should get clarified before it goes to city council because. I don't think that's totally accurate. I think um, again, it's, you know, you kind of have to, we have to kind of. Know a little bit more about how many units are being changed. And then so the other thing that I will, and this is, I get you guys don't have to answer the question, but. What I heard the developer saying was some sort of information from ODOT that changes, you know, that. Subtracted out some right-of-way for road development and something about the densities changing as a result of that. Uh calculation. And so I'm. I guess the question I would be asking for clarification from Shelley is that, you know, you all presented the. Top, potential number of units that could be developed based on the acres that you had in the, in your staff report. Is that somehow no longer, you know, is, is that what it's really gonna be, or does this ODOT calculation? With the road right-of-ways or something, change something? Um so yeah, that, that's kind of a question for you, if you guys could address that later in your staff report. But like I said, please, um I think the Parks Board does wanna weigh in on this and make a recommendation. They were concerned that there wasn't enough specifics. In the proposal to clarify what the acreage requirement was. Um but again, trying to make sure that whatever their recommendation is, is in the staff report would also be something helpful. So thank you very much. Appreciate the time and good job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Kathleen. And Kelly, from her previous comment, you have her name and address, right?
Yeah, yeah, I do. I won't make her use that again. Um and then I ha- have Bill Knapp with his hand raised, so I will allow him to speak now.
Yes, thank you. Uh my name is Bill Knapp. My address is post office box eight eight zero Sandy, Oregon, nine seven zero five five. And my question is both to staff and but program primarily to the planning commissioners is. Since this is a type four um legislative hearing. I, I have not seen really the staff. Um and maybe I missed it. There's a lot, a lot of reading to do, but the rationale or the um for the increase in density. So in other words. It seems to me on, on the plant, on the. The comprehensive plan change, the biggest change is the reallocation of the zoning in this area. And it's an increase in density and, and that, that really is kind of the crux. Of the decision-making on the type four legislative hearing. So. What I would like a, a little more clarification is just what you're thinking in. What, what is the reason that, the beneficial reason for Sandy to do, to increase the density here? Because I, I think that's a. Uh you know, kind of foundational to, to the change, um because you clearly could leave the zoning. You could adjust the lines, but you, you could primarily leave the existing zoning on the comp plan. Um if you so cho- chose. So I'm, I'm looking for that information that I don't really see. Listed at, and it seems to me, you know, one of the most important thing in the legislative hearing to understand what the reasoning is to go down this. Uh road. And then the, the second thing is a little more technical and, and maybe it's premature. Um but it relates a lot to Debarko Road and its um status as a minor arterial. And uh the talk in the traffic, it, it's unclear to me. I, I, I'm assuming that this is not the point at which the decision will be made on the intersection for. Debarko Road and Highway twenty-six, that that will come with the actual development applications. However, clearly. That is a big deal for this um whole Debarko Road, and there is a little bit of a conflicting things going on here. For one, one thing. The through traffic for Debarko Road will clearly increase if the intersection on Highway twenty-six is a full intersection. Which is kind of the point of the minor arterial um designation, but at the same time, um, you know, for neighborhood. It, it's clearly would probably reduce the through trafficking better for the existing neighborhood if, if, if there was some limited access, but that seems to me a. Something that needs to be really thought through about how you're gonna approach this. And, and what, what direction that is heading, because it's, it's unclear to me looking, I see recommendations by the traffic. Engineers that appears to indicate that you wanna ride in, ride out on Debarko Road on US twenty-six and um. But I'm not sure, I, I also don't think probably that this is going to be decided in this legislative action, but anyway. So those are my two basic questions and I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bill. Um and thank you for your past service, and we do have some openings on the planning commission, in case you wanna repeat your past service.
It's a hard job. I think I've done my time.
Well, thank you for your service. Okay, um go ahead and mute your microphone. Thanks. And Kelly?
I don't, I don't see anybody else with their hands raised.
Okay, um. We'll go ahead and go to staff recap.
Okay, so I appreciate the applicant um going through some of the specifics of a few things that have been added um to the proposal. Um I wanted to respond to a few um questions from the public. Um so I'm just gonna go through my notes. Um so parking for high-density residential, Sandy actually has a pretty robust parking code. Um for multifamily units. Um so for every one-bedroom apartment, one point five parking spaces are required, and for every two-bedroom unit, two parking spaces are required. Um I live in Gresham where we're only allowed one parking space for a two-bedroom apartment, and so if I come home at the wrong time, I don't get a parking spot. Um but Sandy has a pretty robust parking code. Additionally, um the required parking is gonna be reviewed in the future design application. Um so that is gonna go through um a review process where city staff is gonna make sure that the parking for the multifamily units meets um the municipal code. Um. So I also wanted to respond to um what I think is a really good concern, um and a really valid concern, which is, you know. We're changing the, the zoning and the comprehensive planament, uh comp plan map. Um without knowing exactly what's gonna go on the property, and I think that that's a really good question to ask. But I will say that it is allowable by state law for a zoning application to be separate from um a development application. Um so anything that is gonna be going on these lots, anything that is, that is gonna be built, is gonna go through a future design review process. Um at which point, um the public and staff will be able to review the applications and um the public will be able to provide comments on the specific. Developments being proposed at that point. Um I can also appreciate, you know, the concerns about. You know, is this really in line with the comp plan? But Kelly's brought up, you know, a good point that the comp plan for Sandy is very outdated and, um you know, we've been having conversations about hiring a consultant to. Update the comprehensive plan. Um I think the current comprehensive plan for Sandy was adopted when I was seven. Um so it's, it's a little, a little old. Um. Um, we also conducted in two thousand and fifteen a house, housing needs analysis and. Um using state-approved methods did determine that there will be an increasing need for housing in Sandy. Um I think I mentioned this in the last meeting and, you know, I'm an anecdote, and anecdotes aren't data, but. The reason I don't live in Sandy is because we couldn't find somewhere that was one of, within our price range that we could um rent. And so just kind of how the market works, um price goes down when supply goes up, so things will become more affordable um as the supply. Um continues to increase for different types of housing. Um I wanna reiterate what Kelly said, that a significant amount of materials in the. Document that was um uploaded to um the public document portal. Um a significant amount of those materials were part of the previous submission. Um that's already been reviewed. Um. To respond to uh Ms. Walker, um we did include um in finding ninety. In the staff report, um a um finding related to the Parks and Trails Advisory Board. Um I would be happy to revisit that and, um you know, before this goes to council, make sure that. You know, all of the recommendations that the Parks and Trails Advisory Board um would like to make are reflected in the staff report. If I understood her question correctly about um the parkland being calculated according to dwelling units. And we don't know how many dwelling units are gonna be in that village commercial um lot. Um so. What we've calculated is that because the parkland that they're dedicating is about point eleven acres greater than what's. Being required by the single-family um medium-density and high-density residential lots. That that point eleven acres corresponds to about thirteen allowable units in the village commercial lot. Um if they propose to build more than thirteen dwelling units, then that will trigger um a fee in lieu. So hopefully that that, that answers that question. Um. The concerns about Debarko Road, that's within the jurisdiction of ODOT. It's been in the Sandy transportation plan to connect Debarko Road to Highway twenty-six. Uh let me see. Oh, and then finally, just responding to um the concerns about increasing density in Sandy. So it's not a, a staff, you know, request. It's not a staff decision. It's an applicant request. And um property owners um are, you know, allowed by um, you know, state and federal law. To request, you know, changing the zoning or developing things on their property. And it's our job to make sure that it meets the um municipal code. Um and the municipal code is finite. And it's um limited, and the decisions that we are and aren't allowed to make are the recommendations we are and aren't allowed to make. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that the um increasing density in Sandy isn't coming from staff or planning commission. It's coming from the applications that we receive. Um so I hope that covers the concerns from public comments. If there's anything else that I missed, anybody is welcome to email their questions or concerns to the planning at CI.sandy.org.us email, um and we'll be able to respond that way. Um.
I had a few additional things too, Shelley.
Yeah, go ahead.
Add to it. Um so the parks, yeah, I agree with Shelley. The, look at Ms. Walker, look at um finding ninety. That addresses the Parks Board dedication. That the trail, the Parks and Trails Advisory Board recommended on June tenth, so that finding reflects that conversation that happened at that board hearing. Finding eighty-eight's also very important for parks, as in that describes how the, well, finding eighty-seven describes how the calculation works. Finding eighty-eight describes that if additional multifamily is proposed on Lot Seven, which is C-three. They would have up to cred, they would have credit up to thirteen multifamily housing units. If they went above and beyond that, then. Obviously, they would have to dedicate additional land or pay a park stay-in lieu. Um we, you know, we also put a uh. Condition in there is that if they don't propose any multifamily on Lot Seven, the applicant will not be owed any monetary credit. So that's just something assuring that the park will be located where it's being proposed, at the size that's being proposed that, and even if they decide to do no multifamily. On the C-three property, that, that's what the parkland would be. Um and getting into Mr. Knapp's question, I think the staff report actually does address what he was asking. If you go to the recommendation section in the staff report, at the bottom of page thirty-five and at the top of page thirty-six. You know, that's, that's kind of getting at what the crux of the thrust is behind the whole zone change and what staff feels. Um how it achieves some of the major objectives through doing the proposal. So it's, it's really a question, I think, before the planning commission and ultimately city council for the decision. But I don't think it's such a bad thing that, and maybe the applicant won't uh back me on this, but. I don't think it's such a bad thing that some of the reason why there needs to be more density is to make the Debarko Road and Highway improvements pencil. But as Shelley just pointed out, those are important transportation uh planning objectives in our long-term planning future for the city of Sandy is to connect Debarko Road and have Highway two. Highway twenty-six improvements at that intersection. So if you look at the bottom of page thirty-five and the top of page thirty-six. That kind of describes seven key points or seven key factors that we think should lead to a recommendation of approval for the comprehensive plan and zone change. And I think the applicant honestly has done a pretty good job of buffering that multifamily from the existing single-family residential. It's buffered with single-family homes, streets, a park and stormwater ponds. Um so there is a buffer, whether it's large enough, that's kind of in the eye of the beholder. But you know, I don't think it's necessarily a negative thing to say that some of the density is needed to make some of the road improvements pencil. I think if that's the truth, that's just the truth. Um I don't think there's any reason to kind of run from that fact. Especially if those road improvements are longstanding objectives. I mean, if you, if you think back as a commission. Um since I've worked for the city of Sandy, I think it was five or six years ago, we tried to pass a gas tax in Sandy that failed. And one of the main four transportation objectives in that gas tax measure. Was the connection of Debarko Road out to the highway. So it's been a longstanding goal of the city council and the city of Sandy to have that street connect through. And you know, I think as staff, we feel that if we can get that street connection through, and if we can get our. Park expanded and improved in this vicinity that has been long awaited, we think those things outweigh the density increases, so. I think it's really that. I think that's what this really comes down to is, do you think uh the proposal by the applicant. Is worth all these good measures that you get at the bottom of page thirty-five and the pop, top page thirty-six? I think that's really. Really the, um I really do think that's kind of the whole thing behind what we're looking at tonight is, do you think that. Um the density is worth the trade-off essentially? So I will leave it with that and uh turn it over to the applicant or the planning commission for any questions.
Uh this commission have any questions for Kelly? Otherwise, we'll go to um the applicant. Rebuttal. Okay, turn it over to the applicant. Okay, turn it over to the applicant.
My name again is Michael Robinson. My mailing address, which I did forget where I worked, my correct mailing address is twelve eleven Southwest Fifth, Suite nineteen hundred Portland, Oregon nine seven two oh four. Chair Carlton, uh, there are three of us that want to respond to what you heard tonight. Would you be willing to give us ten minutes for rebuttal, please? We won't use it if we don't need it, but we'd like to have up to ten minutes.
Okay, um, I'm fine with that. How about the rest of the commissioners? Are you okay?
Thank you. We appreciate it. So let me deal with the continuance request. Your city attorney is exactly correct. This is not the first hearing, so you're not obligated to grant a continuance. Uh, you can, but if you're going to grant a continuance, I guess I would ask what would the purpose be? As Shelley and Kelly said, most of the record had was in, was before you and complete uh, at the end of our August twenty fourth hearing, very little has come in. Even my email was only a page long. Really what we did was listen, uh, take your, your comments and the public's comments into account and revise the plan. So it's certainly your right to continue it, but our preference, if you agree with us, is not to do so and to uh, use tonight's meeting to actually close the public hearing and make a recommendation to the city council. Um, so I'm going to go first, Chair Carlton, and then Mike Guard and Tracy Brown are going to finish me. And I should encourage you or your fellow commissioners, if you have questions you haven't asked of the applicant, now's the time to do it, and we're happy to answer them. So. First of all, I want to thank the folks that had public testimony tonight and as I said a moment ago, we used the time between August twenty fourth and September twenty ninth to listen to your comments and public that testified in August and make revisions to the plan. And we appreciate uh Kelly and uh Shelley saying that, that uh they think we've improved the plan through the buffering to the adjacent single-family homes. We think we do too. And we made a conscious effort to try and do that in response to the questions that the planning commission asked us, as well as testimony we heard from neighbors. So uh, what I thought I would do is go through about eight issues tonight. Again, if you have questions, you're welcome to ask me or uh Ray or Tracy or my guard, and our job is to answer them if we can. So one of the issues that came up in the testimony last time and Shelley addressed it in, in staff recap last time with spot zoning, I wanted to make clear, there's no concept such as spot zoning in Oregon law. What matters is whether the zoning is consistent with the comp plan. So once you have a comp plan designation, zoning follows, obviously. I think you all said as much tonight. And that's what counts. Spot zoning is really a pretty outdated concept. Started in the East Coast about eighty years ago, and it's just not something that most progressive states like Oregon use or consider with respect to zoning. But what's important, I think, is what staff's pointed out to you, which is, do we have the right comp plan map and zoning map designation here? And we think we do. And I think Kelly did a nice job of explaining the pages in the staff report uh, that highlights those reasons. Uh, secondly, uh, in fact, we do satisfy the statewide planning goals. The staff board did a nice job of explaining them. Uh, my little page, page and a half email today addressed Ms. Walker's testimony, her oral and written testimony from August twenty fourth. She identified four statewide planning goals, uh, one, two, eight, and twelve. But she didn't actually um, understand the goals, and I don't mean that pejoratively. I just, I read what she wrote and I don't think she understand understood what those goals provided for. Um, goal one is citizen participation. You've, you've done what goal one requires by providing notice of this hearing. Goal two requires an adequate factual base. That's what the record is in front of you, and it's quite voluminous and it's adequate for you to make a decision. Uh, goal eight is recreational needs. Most of goal eight deals with destination resorts. There's one paragraph in the goal to deal with local planning, but your plan is acknowledged as consistent with goal eight. So you're actually implementing goal eight. Goal twelve is transportation, and that's primarily implemented by the transportation planning rule, which is what Mike Art's study addresses. And I would note that neither ODOT nor your consulting transportation engineer had anything to fault with Mike's revised study. Uh, he did what ODOT wanted and they're fine with it as far as I understand. Um, some of the testimony had to do with impacts of multifamily housing. I agree with staff that the things like uh, some of the testimony that we heard, things like uh increased crime, those simply aren't, it's not evidentiary, that's speculation. And I, I will say, I don't think it's fair to say that multifamily housing equals increased crime. Not everyone can afford a home. Even multifamily housing in the state is expensive, but as Shelley said, uh, more market equals uh reduced prices. But those kinds of issues just aren't relevant to the consideration you have before you. Um, I want to touch on the buffers. Oh, one last thing. The staff report recommended approval because we meet the approval criteria, and that's what's important. That's your decision-making book, so to speak. And so with the exception of the things that I talked about tonight, we really haven't heard about approval criteria. So um, the staff report found that we meet their approval criteria, and I think that's right. It was clear to us from the last hearing that one of the biggest concerns that the planning commission had, and especially commissioners Maite and and Losowski, was how we interacted with our neighbors to the west. And that's why we went back and looked hard at what we proposed. Uh, we now have the R two lot on Lot Five, we have the park, we have significant tree retention, and we appreciate Mr. Virgil Chuck's testimony supporting that. Uh, we have the storm pond, we have the park, we have the screening concept. All of that is done to operate as a buffer to those adjacent single-family homes, and that's why we offered it. The Dubarco Road connection, as Shelley said, has been in your TSP. I worked on this project when Holt owned it back in two thousand. So it has been a challenge to try and find the right economic mix to develop on this property. I can tell you that the amount of commercial land that was there, if it had worked, this property would have been developed, but it doesn't work, and that's why the amount's been reduced. And Dubarco is an expensive proposition, and the applicant has to pay for it. So I think uh, the staff's comments on those are accurate. Uh, we want to see this property developed. I would think you would want to as well. And the fact that it hasn't developed for all these years is, I think, reflective of the fact that the land use mix just doesn't work there. But notwithstanding the increased density we're asking for, the increased types of zoning, uh, we provided a buffer that neighbors asked for, I think, and that this commission asked us about. And we think it will provide a good permanent buffer to those single-family homes. I want to mention just a couple of things, this rules testimony, which I thought was good. Um, there's not a lack of transparency in our application. By the zones, you know what kind of uses you're going to get. And Shelley alluded to the reason why we didn't include uh, specific development applications. Not only is it, is it, um, I think Shelley said it's it's not allow, I'm not, Shelley, I don't remember exactly what you said, so I apologize. State law actually prohibits us from including those kinds of applications. State law lets an application like this include concurrent permit and zoning map amendment. But design review is a limited land use application. State law does not allow us to do that with this kind of application. Maybe it's an oversight in statute, but the reality is, we can't do it. We can't do it for another reason. We would be dependent on the zone changes we're asking for tonight, which aren't in effect yet. And there's a statutory provision called the goalpost rule that says the criteria applicable to an application are those in effect on the date you submit. I apologize for all legalese. What that means is, we don't have the ability to include a development review application with this kind of application. It will always follow, but as Kelly told you, it's a public process. Um, the folks will get an opportunity to comment on it, just like they have here. Um, the only, I only want to mention two other, other things that Ms. Roll said. Seventeen twenty four ten is the intent statement in the comprehensive plan amendment section. That's not an approval criteria, and the approval criterion are found in seventeen twenty four seventy. If you look at that section from the Sandy Development Code, seventeen twenty four ten says its purposes are to be implemented by seven, by the uh, chapter seventeen twenty four. That's what seventeen twenty four seventy does with the approval criteria. And the last thing I'm going to mention, and I want to put this the right way. There's a sense that when people buy a home and they're next to zoning, that there's a promise that it's going to stay that way. And I think that's natural and understandable. The, the problem with agreeing with that viewpoint is that would hamstring the city in making changes that they decide need to be made, either by themselves or as a result of an application. It's entirely fair in a situation like this where we've made the change to ask us to make sure that we buffer our neighbors, and that's what we've done. But I want to be clear, there's no promise made to folks on any zoning. Zoning is dynamic, it changes, it has to change. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't pay attention to what the neighbor said, and that's what we tried to do with our revised application. So we appreciate your time tonight. I don't have anything more. Again, if you have questions, please ask us. But we hope you'll close the, the hearing tonight and make a recommendation of approval to the city council, as staff has recommended that you do. And thank you for your time tonight.
I think I'll go second, if that's okay with you, Tracy. So I wanted to address a couple of comments that, that were made by the public. The first one was a comment by Brenda Hoyt indicating that you can't turn left onto Highway twenty six, and the traffic study pretty well acknowledges that it is difficult to turn left onto Highway twenty six from an unsignalized intersection, and that reflects in the analysis results for both the proposed Dubarco Road intersection on Highway twenty six and the existing unsignalized Langinson Road intersection. We do show high delays associated with those left turn movements, but we also show that they're operating within capacity and within acceptable levels according to the Oregon Highway Plan. The volumes of traffic at those intersections are insufficient to warrant installation of a traffic signal, so without that option being available to us, we do have to accept that there would be some level of delay. What happens when you have delay is that people start to divert to lower delay routes. And in particular, when we look at the intersection of Langinson Road during the PM peak hour, the average delay for a vehicle trying to make a left turn is about ninety seconds. In contrast, if they divert over to Ten Ike Road, the average delay is, and I want to make sure I'm getting the right number, so I'm looking at my notes here. Uh, I believe it is twenty six seconds, and yes, there it is, twenty six seconds at the signalized intersection. So there's a significant decrease in delay as well as a, an improvement in predictability as people divert to signalized intersections. What happens in reality is that the people that are closer to Ten Ike are generally the ones that first divert to that alternative path. There's also the potential to divert people along Dubarco Road to Highway two eleven to access Highway twenty six. So there's actually multiple signalized ways to get out of this area and make left turns onto Highway twenty six. But we absolutely do acknowledge that it is difficult to do so at the unsignalized intersections. Regardless of that finding, we did find that it meets the appropriate approval standards established under the Oregon Highway Plan. And for that reason, we have not only a finding in the study that the transportation system is adequate, but concurrence from city staff as well as the Oregon Department of Transportation. The other thing that I wanted to address briefly is the question of the right in, right out access scenario that I analyzed in the study. And that was something that arose for really two reasons. One is the acknowledgement that turning left onto Highway twenty six at Dubarco Road is going to be very difficult in the future. But the second is that there's a safety problem that we identified at another intersection. It's actually the intersection of Dubarco at Highway two eleven. And people turning left from Dubarco Road onto Highway two eleven, it's been a high-risk maneuver uh, in the past, really from both directions on Dubarco Road, and we did not want to contribute to crash risks at an existing safety hazard intersection. We did contemplate a few treatments for that intersection at the request of the Oregon Department of Transportation. We analyzed the idea of a roundabout there, which really doesn't function well because it's on a a cross-slope angle, and you can imagine as you get cars making circular movements on there and you throw in a truck that's loaded with a heavy load, it's going to want to tip over, not the best scenario. But there is a cheap and effective solution that's available at that intersection. It's the conversion of the intersection to a four-way stop. With the conversion to a four-way stop, that intersection would presumably significantly improve its safety performance. Those crashes that are occurring right now, at least would change in nature and severity at the lower speeds, and that would address the concern. Uh, as far as the city's transportation system plan, the high volumes of traffic on Dubarco Road are intentional and based on the classification are not something that we should be seeking to avoid. The city's transportation system plan is clear in saying that Dubarco Road should accommodate those high volumes of traffic and indeed should accommodate the cut-through traffic that wants to go between Highway twenty six east of this site and Highway two eleven to the south. So we are completing infrastructure that the city has planned for years to complete, and it's, it's our intent to do so. At this point, I don't believe there is any movement toward restricting access at the highway to right in, right out. And in fact, ODOT has specifically objected to that, and you would find that in the ODOT comments that were provided into the record. We are not in any way dependent on a restriction to right in, right out, but we did provide that analysis scenario just to provide you with information that's useful in your decision-making process. And if you have further questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Uh, just so the commission knows, you guys are, the applicant's rebuttal's at about thirteen minutes right now, so.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Just trying to let Dawn know where we're at on the clock.
Need to have a timer running.
So who was the third with Tracy, the next?
Yeah, I just want to take just probably two minutes. Um, yeah, I guess mainly, I think uh, Mike and uh, Mike addressed the traffic and code issues. I just wanted to, I guess, point out a little bit of uh, regarding the parks. So we did meet with the Parks Board twice, and actually, we did send the meeting minutes of those meetings to planning staff, and I thought they they're supposed to be included in the um, as part of the exhibits, and I don't think that happened, but I requested those be included as the exhibits. So in those meetings, you know, the Parks Board was generally, you'll find if you read those, um, that Parks Board was generally supportive. They did want additional information on how the properties were going to be developed. And as Mike Robinson said, you know, that's hard to do at this point. You know, we don't, for one reason, we don't know. The other reason is, at this point, we're requesting the zone change. And so it's really, at this stage of the game, we're primarily just proposing to um, proposing parkland dedication based on about the number of units that we think are going to be on the property, not the exact number, because that will come at a future application that will go through a land use review as well. So we, I just wanted to point that out. As part of that discussion with the Parks Board, I think I might have mentioned that to the planning commission, you know, we did talk to them about the, the idea, and we'll be talking to the city council more about this, of helping to assist in develop, actually developing the park. As you probably all know, the Deer Point Park has been laid fallow for, you know, over ten years. Really, nothing's happened at that park. And I feel like this, with the addition of this dedication and the construction equipment onsite to develop this subdivision, it'd be a perfect opportunity to develop that park, at least, you know, the rough grading and things like that. So it could be a win-win. You know, it'll benefit not only the existing community and a lot of, some of those comments in the community reflected the, you know, their angst about, you know, we were promised a park, but nothing's really developed, so that would hopefully be done um, at that time when this is developed. So with that, again, we request that you recommend approval. You know, and this, this recommendation is been supported by the city engineer and their comments, the public works director, ODOT, planning staff, and the transit manager. And I feel like even the Parks Board was generally supportive of the concept when they reviewed the park proposal per se. So with that, we'll entertain any questions you might have.
Okay. So now that takes us through our, our testimony part. Um, normally, what we do is we do tend to leave the public hearing open just so that we can dialogue with the applicant. Um, at some point, if we're going to board this on to counselors, and we probably should talk about if there's a desire to continue or not because of, that will determine if and when we close the public hearing. But um, we're pretty much closed for comments from the, the public. And the reason we, we hold it open is sometimes we have a question, the applicant just says yes or no, and we don't have to go through all of the opening, all the closing, and be reading all that stuff again. So. Um. Discussion from commissioners. Either speak up or if you want me to recognize, raise your hand, however you want to go about doing it, who wants to be first out of the box.
Chairman, I'll kick it off. I'm really just
Can't hear you, Chris.
Oh, hey, God. Can you hear me now?
All right, Chris, can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I think it's Says you're unmuted, but I can't hear you.
Dawn, I think it's your headset.
Oh, everybody else can hear me?
Yeah.
Uh, do like I did. Unplug the microphone and plug it back in, see if you can get it to handshake again.
You need to plug in, Don.
It's you, Don.
You, Don.
Hey, God, I'll, I'll write a note.
Assume you folks are hearing me. Not hearing me.
Oh, where's my camera at? Oh, hang on.
Good. Tracy, you're hearing me? Okay. Ron, you're hearing me?
Unplug.
Unplug.
Yeah, I think he needs to, need to ditch that headphone set, man. Need to unplug. There you go.
Don, can you hear me now?
Yeah. Plug my headphones.
All right, so I'll go ahead with my question now. Maybe it's not really a question, it's just a comment. I'm stuck on a teeter totter and I have been since August with this. Only because I I have an idealism about what I I like about it and some things I dislike, but. One of the, the main things that I've highlighted and I even did it in my code book was seventeen two four ten. And really the intent and one of the, one of the people speaking brought it up, the staff letter brought it up, but. I'm balancing two things and I'll I'll bring them out. Community attitude toward R three housing and I'm just going to be blunt with that. That's what I've, I've heard over and over again. Just the community attitude toward R three housing in general. And comparing that to what the comprehensive plan integrity actually meant. Or what it, what it's meant to do, whether it has to do with the urbanization study or whether it has to do with the comp plan of twenty forty. Just what is that integrity standard that we need to consider when trying to understand the, the intent? Of seventeen two four ten. And I got to tell you, I'm really conflicted because I, I, I heard the presentation in August and. I liked a lot of the things I heard, but I knew there are some things that needed to change. I listened to what they presented today and I think it was just a fantastic movement in in the right direction. But I still feel like I'm conflicted between the R three housing that this um zoning. Change would happen or take what they're, they're asking for versus what the, the, the community attitude is and I'm. I'm more asking for the other commissioners to help um educate me a little bit about that comp plan integrity. Because I think we've all heard the community attitude over the last year about R three housing and I'm really just looking for. For, for more intuition. Thank you.
I would just go on one or two quick comments. I'm going to do my best to facilitate, but I wrote, written a few things down. Um, you know, zoning when the comp plan is done is kind of particularly on undeveloped land is you draw lines. And they may not be exactly where they're at because until you have a specific development, somebody gets more clear. Um, they, they, they are there. So I'm not as concerned about, you know, something changing. Um, we have R three throughout the entire city. Okay, so. But if we want to provide um first of all affordable housing, which a lot of public has said. Um, and you have a developer wanting to do that. Um, that's the opportunity we have. Um, you can say, well, there's R three over here, wouldn't that would be better? Well, that person may not be interested in developing. You know, so you get, but you can't force somebody to develop the land. Okay, so um there is some type of a, a trade off and I think supporting recognized it was going to be R two. So the real question is what's interesting R two and R three. The point is, is a large area of this wasn't going to be all single family residential. So, um, you know, they're just trying to, I agree with what was said. I think it's in the economic analysis. Um, you know, the pencil out and pencil out means that Dubarco Road. You know, he's paid for and we've been told by um testimony over and over again that development pays for itself. So you have a developer wanting to pay for himself and that's what a pencils out. So that, you know, Chris, I think you're right. There's, there's trade offs. You know, there's nothing perfect, but there's these trade offs. So. Um, I just want to think to share, but I'd like to wait. I like to let somebody else have a chance to give us our thought.
And and Chair Carlton, I think I just say one quick thing in response to Commissioner Maitland's comments. I would, I would just um counsel. The planning commission with respect to twenty four, excuse me, seventeen twenty four ten. I, I don't view those as, as approval criteria per se. I mean, if you read that, it talks about really what the intent of those criteria are, the approval criteria themselves. And so, you know, in, at the end of the day, the approval criteria for. Comp plan amendments. Uh are, are really two and those are at twenty four seventy, the review criteria. The one that's always going to be applicable because that's what we do when we amend comp plans is make sure that they comply with the goals and. We've heard a lot of testimony about that tonight and that's. That's up to the commission and then ultimately the council to determine whether that's been met or not. Uh but then the first one is the change being proposed is the best means of meeting the identified public need. So really that's the, the piece to really kind of focus on and, and I, I certainly think that, that part of that public need. Would bring in uh what um, you know, changes have happened, certainly since the plan was initially. Uh adopted, the conditions that are different, maybe now versus then, how that's evolved over time. Uh and certainly attitudes would be a part of that, but I just wanted to um. Make sure that I, I, at least I, from my point of view, I clarify that I, I don't think. As a criteria, the attitude of the public is one that is either satisfied or not satisfied. It's, it's played into a pretty subjective mix of considerations, but I think it really goes to, has the applicant. Uh shown the, the planning commission that there has, they've identified a public need and that this is the best. Uh means of meeting that and that certainly could be, uh, you know, additional housing, more affordable housing. Certainly could be if this is the way to get infrastructure built. Uh have they, have they demonstrated that, have they convinced you of that? Um, but I just wanted to point out that I, I guess that little clarification in my mind as to what the review criteria are.
Yes, I appreciate you doing that. That's why I kind of preface a little bit. Um, uh, the area that Shelley had gone over of the exact group of criteria and so we can focus on that. So anyway, others.
I did have a couple of comments. Um, we've heard a lot about density. But I think it's important to point out that what, what a lot of people are concerned about density is. At least when it's, when it relates to transportation is trip generation. And with this, the latest um proposal includes a trip cap, so effectively. It wouldn't generate any more trips under the, the new comp plan and zone change designations as they do under the current ones. So in that regard, there's not an increase in intensity to the site. That includes commercial and everything else. Um, which I think kind of helps mitigate some of those concerns and to that end. I don't find in the revised conditions of approval anywhere that talks about establishing that trip cap that the applicant proposed and ODOT agreed with. I might be missing it, but I did want to raise that.
Uh, Kelly, you want to? Comment on that?
Um, could I actually kick that over to Mike Arden to respond to?
I think the question was mainly, uh, you know, he, he mentioned that there is a trip cap. And the question is, is that trip cap uh integrated into the, you know, the conditions of approval?
I don't have to go back and read through.
I'll say it should be a condition of approval. So if it's not there, uh, then Todd, that's a good catch.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, um, you know, if it's written there or not. Um, that's fair if we can find that out. We do, I would say we need to make sure that that's part of the approval criteria. When we make a motion.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't, it was, did John Replinger comment on that trip cap in his letter?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if it's not in the conditions list, so it'd just be something you could add with, with a recommendation.
Um, I guess, Todd, I'd like to ask one question. Uh, you know, because you're on the commission and because of the hat you wear. The, the issue of a stoplight um at where Dubarco intersects the highway there. Um, is not a new idea. Um, having spent about fifteen years on the commission, you get a chance to have a form of memory. And uh, when uh Lois Coleman was on the commission. Um, she was very concerned about that. Her solution was the concern about kids and she can put a tunnel under the highway, the kids could back through. Uh, the point is, is that I realized first of all, ODOT has one, one goal in mind, that's to move people, not stop. I learned that so hard way. Um. Always said, test one, he was that, you know, that the current situation doesn't generate it. What, what triggers? The need to have a stoplight there?
Well, it's semi complicated, but the, the gist of it is it's the left turns from this minor street, so. It might be, it might be, there's a signal planned there eventually in the future and that's clear in the applicant's plans too. But it would take more traffic turning left from the minor street to meet that warrant and because it's on the east end of town. Um, that's unlikely to happen. So most of the utility of that street connection, at least initially, is going to be. To let traffic come down to Barco up to twenty six to and from the east without having to make a left turn onto the highway. Um, but it can be a bit of a chicken and an egg thing there where there needs to be enough left turns, but there's not enough, enough left turns because the delays are so long. And sometimes ODOT's pretty conservative with those, that methodology. I think intentionally is kind of hard to warrant a signal. It'll happen eventually, but I think that would be. Some years in the future when there's more development out on this part of town.
Okay, thanks. Others, their comments. Ron?
Well, mine's a, I wrote some notes. I want to be, it's quite as long one as I normally am, but. For first off, um, to the applicant, kudos for all the adjustments made. Thanks for the good listening, um, the buffer that you put in, the step down. I think that was. Fantastic. Um, and in terms of the technical side, I think it met the criteria that's laid out. They complied with their review criteria. And. But I'm taking off of Chris's word, the word integrity. And that's kind of what's bothering me here. And I don't think anybody should do anything dishonest. Um, first of all. But to go back on the phrase that I've come to hate now, development pays for itself. And I'm trying to figure out as a commissioner, at least for myself, how do we go back to the city council? And you're not trying to politicize this here. But this is kind of what we're going to run up against with the development pays for itself. Here's a piece of land. You want to make it work. So I don't believe the developers doing this to really pad themselves with more money. They're doing it to figure out how to pay for a really expensive street intersection with a major highway. And the infrastructure that goes along with it. That's why the increase in the housing side of it to make it pay for itself in my little air quotes. So and I, I totally appreciate Kelly O'Neil, um, the planning director acknowledging that. And, you know, it. We're being honest that, that a lot of these changes are being done to facilitate the necessary uh. A way to support the cost of the developers going to incur. I was a little bit taken back. I don't want to say appalled was too far of Mr. Robinson's comments stating that zoning is dynamic. I don't, I want to, um, I don't have the exact quote down, but these things are just going to happen. Well, if you were sitting or living next door to this, you know, if, I wouldn't. I'm sorry for stumbling around, but it was coming back and everybody's supportive. I was writing down all the names of everybody that's supportive of this change. The parks, the, you know, city engineers, blah, blah, blah. People aren't supportive of the people that are living there. And until we go through. And figure out a game that's kind of monkey hour back that development pays for itself, the whole city of Sandy is going to. Um, gain in this. I mean, I think it's, it's, they could, we need it for the transportation infrastructure. But if the city were to be able to put some money into it, then it might have been such a big cost to the developer. And we might have single family residential, those are all duplexes in there. I don't know if you're following or not, but. You know, that's what we're getting. They met the criteria, you know, and. So I, that's my, my hope is that we can, at least myself, is somehow send that message up to the city council. That this development that pays for itself, we're just going to have another one down the road. All right. And if you look down three sixty second bell, the city has stepped forward and figured out. Hey, we got to put this up and put some money into to get this thing done. It's, it's just really super costly. So anyway, a little long winded, sorry, but that's my um. Thing. And then the other one, it was a little bit of a little one on lot number seven. For the star, the storefronts facing the parking. I mean, I would just take that out. I think that especially with the. Ability to have those mixed use residential. That's, you know, looking down, maybe the residents are the ones that want to look at the park if they had that in there as opposed to the storefronts. On it. So anyway, thanks for listening. I'm done.
Okay, uh, John and Hollis, I haven't heard from you yet, which is one you'd like to, if you want to come in and say something.
And I think you all know that I'm not going to sit here and repeat what everybody else is saying because I do concur with uh. A little bit of something that everybody has said thus far, especially with Ron, I would say I concur with almost all of his. Uh, it's. The density and the R three zone, we've talked about this a lot and we've talked about the affordable housing is nobody wants the affordable. Housing in their backyard. Um, that's what we've noticed. When the Bailey Meadows, when they were complaining, uh, when the residents were complaining about. The volume of homes up there, they're saying, well, the homes aren't affordable housing. Well. It's true, they weren't affordable housing. This would be. Add more inventory of rental homes and more affordable housing to the city and I, I'd forget who it was earlier that mentioned. That brings the overall cost of rental homes down once there's a decent supply of rental homes. So I. It, it's, it's hard to. Look at what has been presented tonight and not agree. That the goals have been met and the intent is there as well.
I, I, are you done, Dan? Okay. Um, I, I would say I would agree. I think as everyone has spoken, it's become more and more clear. Um, what you just said, John, that nobody wants the higher density in their backyard. And yet we all know we need more density so that there'll be affordable housing. So it seems to me, um, first of all, that with the changes that the developer has put forth. Based on listening to the input from the commission and from the community. Um, and then also, which I thought they did some really thoughtful or some very creative things. But also the connection of Dubarco to twenty six is long overdue. Um, that's, I mean, it's been a goal for a long time. And the, you know, if we think about how bad the traffic is going through downtown Sandy. Getting Dubarco to really be that thoroughfare further through. Um, it's going to be a big game for the community. So I would say we send it on with uh. About her approval.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with Hollis. I'm, I mean, love it or hate it, that's sort of how transportation, transportation financing works. Um, it takes projects like this to build. Arterial road segments and made intersections with the state highway that don't come easily without it. So. Um, they've limited development potential on the site to, to what could. The same level of intensity like what could be done under the current zone. We get important infrastructure like that. I feel like the approval criteria are met and I'd be supportive.
Uh, when you, when you say that, you, you're, you're referring to the trip cap or as limiting uh the future. Or what would have been right now anymore.
That's right. It's a different mix of housing types and different. Hectares of commercial, but at the end of the day, it's the same trip intensity.
Okay. Well, I'll go through it. I'll, I will not repeat at all, but I have a couple of things I'd like to share. Um, you know, the, a couple of things. Uh, first of all, the original zoning has a significant amount of R two there. So there was going to be R two. You know, the couple of things, uh, first of all, the original zoning has a significant amount of R two there. So there was going to be R two, anybody bought the area, it was R, R two. Um, so there was going to be some, um, multiple family housing at some point in some way, shape or form. I said earlier, but I do believe, you know, and you, uh, Rob's a little bit. Having been on the commission now for about like fifteen years, you know, you, you have these areas that are zoned, but until you start proposing something and they're, they're not showing you where, where buildings are going to be, but they're showing you where the roads are. They're saying, you know, this is going to be our three, our two. You know, that's, that is pretty specific. And all the calculations, for example, for parks, et cetera, have been done with the, the maximum allowable, uh, density. You know, the R, the C three, I realize they can put some additional codes in there. But again, uh, you know, that will be a separate application at that time. I'm, I'm very happy that they wanted to develop the park. We have seen many applications come through and they developed to just say, oh, we're going to pay the fee in lieu of, in fact, Ron and I talked about this and he said, yeah, they could sell the lots. You know, cheaper than the money that they have to pay. So I don't know if that, that pincels out, but that, that, that's definitely some objective. Um, the Barco is critical to the city SA. And, um, I agree a hundred percent with, uh, with Ron, um, as shared. I don't want to divert back to Bailey Meadows, except to point out that, um, after that went to council, I, I became quite interested on, you know, uh, what the, uh, what the percent of trips would, would end up, uh, using the new road that were coming from Nicholas Plan or other places were coming the other way. And I just used the numbers in the transportation study. I came up with somewhere to thirteen seventeen percent. This one, it's even, even higher. I haven't more into the traffic study, but there's a benefit to Sandy as a whole. After Barco, it's got nothing to do with the subdivision. It provides conductivity. As such, I, I think is an extreme justification for the city to be paying a certain amount. The problem is the city doesn't have a program to do that. And three sixty second, uh, to Bell is an example. Is they don't have the money, so they're going to have to grant money, but they recognize the importance of that piece of infrastructure. So. I like to figure out a way for us to send the message to council that in their long range goals that the police are setting again for next year, they start recognizing this. And that when you have these, these type of, uh, of roads that are on the field that, yeah, the ball pays for itself, but if there's a benefit to the city as a whole, there, there's a reason why the city could pay a certain amount, but unless you have any money, you can't do it. But so that's just an evolving issue with Sandy now being twelve thousand, et cetera. So you, you just got to play the chips where they, where they happen to fall and and as long as we're saying that evolved, it's got to pay for the whole infrastructure, it, it does have to pencil out. So that's just calling the speed pretty much the way it is. So, um, those are kind of my comments. I feel we should forward it to council. I, I, I feel we should recommend they look at it. And that they, if they approve it, uh, but I don't know how to send that message. As Ron and I show up and get up that, that, that the city needs to start addressing this issue of getting their share of roads or getting roads built where they want them. And then backfilling that money from development when it comes in, not waiting for the development basically to go about doing it.
Can I, can I add just, um, I typically don't do this, but can I just add a point of clarification there as well? So that, that's part of the reason why I mentioned gas tax earlier is that is a mechanism. And I'm not saying, I'm not trying to politicize this meeting at all, but I am saying that that's a mechanism that most cities use to pay for big public infrastructure costs such as the Barco Road, three sixty second. What are the other ones? Gunderson Road, all that, you know, the, the highway that we're assuming jurisdiction over highway two eleven. It's a great move, I think, for the city of Sandy because we'll control the future of that, including maybe a four way stop at Debarco and highway two eleven, as Mike Ard pointed out. But with that is going to come a lot of costs. And I do believe, I do agree with you, Don, that we're going to have to find out a mechanism to help pay for those really expensive costs. And that's why I mentioned the gas tax earlier because that is a typical mechanism that helps pay for those projects. The only other thing that I wanted to mention, because I wanted to kind of let the public know that when I brought up the whole thing of, you know, I think that we just had to be honest that the, one of the reasons that they're proposing the higher density is to make the whole transportation system pencil out. I want to be very clear that with this proposal being a comp plan and a zone map amendment, one of the things we have to look at, which I think most of you have done a fantastic job of identifying, including our attorney, is that is this comprehensive plan, is this zone change, is it a public benefit? And I think that's distinctively different than like a designer view where people make the argument, oh, well, sandy style is costing a lot of money. It's, it's true. It costs more money than it would cost without sandy style. But typically when you see a designer view and we say we don't factor in costs, it's because those designs are not a public benefit to the same degree that parkland or new transportation systems are. Do we like the aesthetically pleasing buildings in our downtown and throughout the community since sandy style? I agree we do. But I don't think there's any relationship in the code criterion to relate costs associated with sandy style to, oh, well, does it outweigh or does it make a public benefit? The application before you tonight, there is a direct causal link that you can make that it's in the public's interest to have the Barco Road. Maybe not some of the people on dear point won't feel this way, but it's in the public's interest as a whole to have the extension of the Barco Road through and to have the park. And therefore I think we can look at and evaluate things such as density and does it make more sense for a developer? To seek some of the monetary finances back for that development. So I know I was kind of rambling there, but I'm just trying to, it's getting close to ten, but I'm just trying to explain that if you attend a future planning commission hearing and you say, and you, it's something like sandy style. And we say, well, we don't factor costs into that. That is true. But tonight I think what we're looking at, and if it's a public benefit is a, is a different beast is what I'm trying to get at.
Hey, um, if, uh, it sounds to me like folks have kind of spoke and, uh, is there a general idea? Consensus that we want to move this on to city council? It's so well closed, the hearing. That's to David.
Wait, I just, I'm going to add something again. Sorry. I don't want to get stuck on this and I certainly don't want to prolong your meeting, but I just feel like in my head, it's, it's bouncing around. And what David said is to go back to seventeen twenty four seventy. The change being proposed is in the best means of meeting the identified public need. And I think what I'm hearing everyone say, just to make sure I have clarity, is not necessarily the R three conversion is going to meet the public desire or need. It's going to be more of the transportation and the roads and everything that's culmination because of the, because of that build or zone change will allow the rest of that infrastructure to come along with it. And that, and then when you look at the big picture of everything combined, that is, that is meeting the overall general need of the entire community, um, for what we're, for what we're seeking for that area. Is, is that a good synopsis of it?
Well, I think definitely, uh, definitely. Uh, again, I also think that public need involves, you know, affordable housing. Now, uh, affordable is a catchword. Uh, I have no idea if they plan to make this a HUD project or they plan to, whatever they plan to do. But the point is Shelley, I think, made a good comment. That is supply and demand. We've known on the commission that we have, uh, we don't have enough, um, apartments available. That's what's driving costs. Okay. So it's more than that. And the other one is the village commercial is, I think in another meeting, it'd be better somewhat to talk about if it's uh, vulnerable or not, uh, that's up to, uh, somebody, but you know, I, my vision would be, it'd be nice if there was some type of a structure there, uh, you know, convenience store, for example, so that the people on that side of town didn't have to run all the way down to Fred Meyer to get a loaf of bread. That's an example. I mean, what are the, the purpose of village commercial is not big time commercials, but you know, maybe something like that. So if, you know, it gets the ball rolling in, in that direction. So are we ready to, to vote?
All right. Before you got, uh, I was just going to say one other thing. Uh, ma, uh, Commissioner Main, to answer your question, at least from a staff perspective, I can't speak on behalf of the other commissioners, but I think it's both. Because if you see in our recommendation and throughout the document, but in the recommendation, it's more clear that the first, um, four items are more transportation and parks related. And then if you, if you look down as it goes more down that list, we, we do find that it's also fulfilling housing needs and, uh, fulfilling a mixture of housing types consistent with the comp plan. So I, I do think it's both. I think it's both the density and the infrastructure.
I appreciate, I appreciate it. I was considering it. I was just thinking that there's a lot of other R three area not, not built on yet, that maybe just hasn't had the right developer come along for it. So when I was thinking about R three, um, land, there is R three land available. Just we're converting this to add more R three land to our city. And that was what I've been hearing, at least from, um, from the, the testimony, that that's what some of the argument is because that brings along, you know, a multitude of other things that go along with it. I was just trying to balance the, the need of R three versus the need of the other things listed, which were the, the primary street infrastructure changes. And I certainly agree with our chairman. I think that plan is definitely R two. Um, I was just questioning whether it was the need for R three was there. And that was my, that's my own internal battle to, to, to measure. And you guys have all done a great job helping me get along with that. Thank you.
Ron, if you have something, you want to. Then unmute yourself, Ron.
Thank you, Don. I was just going to round the wagons one last time. And again, if we were sitting here and again, kudos to the applicant that listened, great, made tons of adjustments. Couldn't be more happy with that. Again, thanks. But we walked in here and there wasn't any zone changes, maybe some movement from one east, west with the park, et cetera. We, we probably wouldn't be here, but again, we're here because it can't pencil out with the, with the zoning that it's laid out on it. So be it R three or whatever else is, I know we need it. Again, when, when we come back, they, they've met the criteria in my mind that's there. I'm just trying to look down the road a little bit as a planning commission outside of this application of we're, we're going to, we're going to have another one. Okay. Where, where it comes up, where we're going to trade and have neighbors that are going to have changes to them so that we can figure out how to pay for the infrastructure needs, the roads, whatever you want to call it, to justify the project. So anyway, I'm done.
Okay, I, you know, can't, can't, you know, I can't agree more. And all I've asked Kelly to do is kind of help us kind of get the message to council, you know, is three sixty second was strike one, Gunderson was strike two, and the debacle was strike three. When we got a, you know, recognize reality and see it in the city, we'll start working on funds and a plan for it. So, um, sounds like we're move this. I mean, either we're going to the vote, ready to move it on to council. Is that what people are saying? Yeah. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close a public hearing.
I'll second it.
Assuming that was.
By John and you seconded it?
Well done.
Ron, did you do it?
What was it? I'm sorry.
Who, who seconded?
I did.
Okay, um, so, um, all for a roll call vote.
You, you want a roll call vote? Okay.
I guess we don't need one. All them papers give you a thumbs up or thumbs down. All up. Anybody opposed? Okay, uh, we're closed. Talked about it, I guess. My would suggest there's an opportunity for someone to make a motion. And David's at the ready to help us if we get the words not quite right.
I'll give it, I'll make a shot at it. I, uh, I moved to approve, and I know there's multiple applications here, but I moved to approve nineteen oh five oh.
It's a, it's a recommendation.
Thank you. Recommending we move it up.
I just wanted to get you there before you went too long there.
I blew it already. I was just specifics, but yes, thank you. Recommendation to council for approval of nineteen oh five oh, the comprehensive plan amendment, zone change, subdivision, specific area plan overlay with tree removal. Full run terrace with the addition of a condition of approval to implement the trip cap of three hundred and forty PM peak hour trips.
I second.
It moved by Todd and seconded by Hollis. We'll get a call for a roll call vote.
Yeah, let me catch up here. I'm typing the motion out. Hold on one second. Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Lasowski.
Yes.
Commissioner McLean Wenzel.
Yes.
Commissioner Logan.
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yes.
Commissioner Maithen.
Yes.
And Chairman Carlton.
Yeah.
At nine fifty four.
Any, thank you very much. And any, any comments, uh, for, from the commission? Or we got, here team meeting, uh, mostly closed.
If there's any public on, don't forget to apply for a planning commissioner. We need to.
Okay, well, again, I like I like to thank the applicant, um, you know, yeah, you've done a, a very good job at analysis and presenting and uh, first the next step to city council. So I guess I'll entertain a motion to, uh, a journalist. So Kelly, has something you want to say with respect to the November meeting?
No, um, other than, I believe it's going to be November twenty third. Is that correct? I'm sorry. Yeah, very.
Monday of the week of Thanksgiving, uh, well, we probably should make sure we have a forum.
Yeah, we, we did ask a few months ago, and that was the date that most people could, that's the date that most people could meet. I think we had at least six people.
On my calendar.
What's that?
I said, that's on my calendar. That's right. The twenty third.
Yeah, I think that was the date that almost everybody.
Yeah, you might, Kelly, you might make a note. Uh, I'll be traveling. Uh, so I may make it. I don't know. It just all depends. I mean, I could log in remotely. But that's okay. That's my problem.
Okay. Well, I, yeah, I'll send some out in the next, maybe later this week, just reconfirming that that date still works for everybody. We already have some noticed for that night. So I, I think we'll have a quorum, but I'll just double check. No, that's, I think that's all I had. We're going to just do a seven o'clock start on that. It's the only item on that agenda, but it is a rather big item because it's a hundred and twenty something lot subdivision with a plan development. So be prepared for a decently long night, uh, especially with public testimony. But, uh, no, I didn't have anything else tonight.
Okay, um, I guess one comment for those that are in the public or maybe still on the call. Um, I know you, you look at these and you see the total pages and it looks voluminous and of all the respect, you know, none of us are able to read every line of every page. It's just you have to know which ones to read. And, you know, reading the staff report is the number one key thing, and those are usually not tremendously long. So, for your involvement, just focus on the staff report and then you can kind of go from there. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ron, you want to move to adjourn?
I'll make a move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Bye.
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 Thanks, guys.
Bye.
Thank you.
Good job getting done before ten o'clock, guys. I mean, seriously, good job.
Good night.